City Council, and this is a presentation for us today. So I'll go ahead and call to order the joint work session meeting with the City Council, Planning Commission, May 11th, 2021, and welcome everyone. So I'll call on Claudia to do a roll call.
Counselor Geary? Counselor Geary?
Are you using your first name, Gary Langen-Walter, rather than Zach Geary?
Oh, yes.
Okay, I'm here.
Oh.
No, it was, it was.
Zach Geary. I know he's here. Um, Counselor.
Sorry, I'm here.
Minky?
Here.
Counselor Garvin? Counselor Peralta?
Here.
Counselor Chinoweth? Uh, Council President Dropkin?
Here.
Mayor Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Winfield?
Here.
Commissioner Rankin?
Here.
Commissioner Randall?
Here.
Commissioner Banagay? Commissioner Langen-Walter?
I'm here.
Commissioner Tokolsky?
Present.
Commissioner Santry?
Here.
Commissioner McLellan? Youth Liaison Downs? And Chair Hall?
Thank you, Claudia, for taking roll call for us. This evening, it is good to be able to meet with the Planning Commission again. It wasn't that long ago that we had a joint meeting, and it's always good to see you and just recognize the good work that our planning commissioners do for the council. This evening, we're going to be taking time to go over the Three Mile Lane Area Plan presentation. Many of you that are around the table, so to speak, have been through portions of this presentation as we were preparing to bring it to the joint session this evening. So with that being said, I'll call on Planning Director Heather Richards to introduce the topic to the Joint Council and Planning Commission. So Heather?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, councilors and planning commissioners. So tonight, we're bringing to you our presentation on the Three Mile Lane Area Plan. It's getting to its end result of a final draft. We have to have a final product by the end of this month. Our funding program runs out at that point in time. This is a grant-funded project from the Transportation Growth Management Program, which is through ODOT and DLCD. We applied for the funds back in 2017, and we applied for the funds to do an area plan on Three Mile Lane, which is Highway 18 as it bifurcates the community. And we did it because there was, in a city that has a lot of land supply constraints, there was a significant amount of vacant land for frontages on Highway 18. And as a planning team, we were asking ourselves, why is that occurring there? And then also, how can we look at that opportunity in terms of planning that area so that it's leveraged for McMinnville's future? The last time planning was done in the Three Mile Lane area was about 40 years ago with the Oregon Highway 18 Corridor Plan in the city's Three Mile Lane overlay district. So we thought there was a lot of opportunity to update that. We also, there's some fairly significant highway improvements in the Highway 18 Corridor Plan, and we wanted to revisit those and see if they were still warranted moving forward or if there was another way we could be looking at mitigating safety measures on Highway 18 and throughput for the highway facility, as well as allowing for local development on either side of the highway as well. So we did get the grant. It's a fairly large grant for the TGM program. It's somewhere around $245,000. The city's match was minimal, less than 10% for that. And we've been working on this project for the last three years. We put together a project advisory committee and a technical advisory committee. Prior to COVID, we were having great project advisory committee meetings in person. We did a couple of charrettes. We did open houses and town halls, had good participation, both in terms of numbers, but also people who just were willing to sit down at the table and really start brainstorming opportunities for this area. The participants included property owners in the area, so both commercial, industrial, and residential property owners, as well as business owners and residents who live there, and then community members, too. So it was a great process. As we finished that and went into COVID, we then started updating the transportation model for the city of McMinnville to make sure that that was accurate in terms of what we anticipate for transportation today. So we took existing conditions, and then we forecasted that out for 20 years to look at what would transportation be like on this highway and the local roads in 20 years' time because we want to make sure we're protecting the mobility of the highway system as we look at the opportunity for local development along the frontage there. That transportation modeling finished somewhere in, I think, February, and we've been working through the land use scenario that the public came up with for the highest and best land uses in the area to serve McMinnville's future, to see if the transportation system supported that, and also what our preferred transportation facility would be and if that would work as well. So we're going to bring you the results tonight. I'm actually really excited about this because what it does for McMinnville is it allows us to look at an area that had fairly disparate uses taking place there. We have residential development, we have commercial development, industrial development, the airports out there, and we also have the Evergreen Campus, and brings it all together in a cohesive way in terms of our future development there and the amenities that we're proposing to support it. And then also, the transportation improvements required to support both the local development and protect the Highway 18 system are, after the end results of all this, are actually lesser than what we thought they needed to be, and so there's significant financial savings in that regard, too. So it's been a great project. It's been good to work with ODOT as a partner and with our consultant team, and our consultant team will be presenting the results to you this evening. Darcy Rosinski is with Angelo Planning Group, and she'll be leading the presentation. And then Andrew Mortensen is with David Evans and Associates. He's been our project lead for the consultant team and is familiar with McMinnville because he also worked on our transportation system plan update as well. So I will turn it over to them. Many of you participated in the project advisory committee meetings or in the charrette or the town halls. So thank you for all of your time and effort in this process.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for hosting us on this Zoom call. I hope everyone can hear me okay. I'm going to look at Heather to, Laurie, she's nodding her head, and you can see my screen, which should have a PowerPoint presentation. Awesome. Let's go to the slideshow. Perfect, okay. I feel like I've accomplished something already tonight. So I am going to run through a series of slides. I'm going to try to keep it pretty short, just sort of give you an overview of what you have before you tonight in the guise of a draft plan. Before I do that, I do want to introduce in absentia a couple of other folks that were part of our team. Andrew Parrish on my team with Angelo Planning Group, we were sort of the policy and land use folks on this project. Andy, of course, is here tonight. He's going to also be presenting some information for you. We had economists on the team, Sam Brookham and Chris Zahas from Leland Consulting Group. They did a lot of work early on for, you know, help us understand the opportunities of the area and really what the, particularly the vacant land, but also redevelopment opportunities could host as far as economic opportunities. And then Ken Peery with Walker Macy was our, or is our urban designer. I'm going to be running through some of his work, not as eloquently as he could, but he was invaluable in helping sort of envision what this area could look like in the future, how it could grow and evolve. So the project goals and objectives, we'll get to those first, just to kind of get a grounding. As Heather said, this was a TGM project, a funded project, and true to those TGM objectives, this really was a process of putting together an integrated land use and multimodal transportation system. Multimodal sounds like a buzzword, but really it just means we're planning for more than just the vehicle, but also bikes, bicycles, and pedestrians. Part of the intent of this project really was to develop a complete land use plan and a supportive transportation network, a plan that integrated housing, economic development, tourism opportunities, gateway development, and all in a way that really land uses and transportation complemented each other, supported each other. These were our overarching goals, and really what they helped us do is to come to this final, you know, draft area plan that really shows how land use will evolve over time, how the areas will be connected, the neighbors, the existing and the future neighborhoods will be connected, and how state and regional transportation needs will be met as well as local transportation needs. So that's a lot to do, but it's also a pretty large area, so we had a lot to work with. We were guided by your Great Neighborhood Principles, and as you know, these are part of your comprehensive plan. They're really intended to guide land use patterns and urban design and development throughout the city. And so what we did was bring these principles to the Three Mile Lane area, and we put a series of objectives to how these principles could manifest, how they could become realized in this area. So they were, you know, there's a big focus on preserving elements that really make the area unique. Our urban designer, Ken, he liked to say, you know, sort of the McMinnville-ness of the area and really bring those things to light, or verbalize them, I guess, more than anything. Connections to key locations, very important. There's so many, we had two slides. Addressing urban design elements, sort of enhancing and enforcing the elements that make the area special, and all of these are in the plan. And I'll be referring actually to some page numbers in case you have the plan in front of you. I'm going to be going kind of fast, but these are on page 17 and 18 in the draft. And they became actually the basis for policies that will specifically help the city guide future growth and development in Three Mile Lane. So these guiding principles and objectives were discussed and refined with the community. We started early in the project with a series of focus group meetings, really small group discussions with folks who have had intimate knowledge of the area, looking at opportunities and strengths, some ideas of how the area could develop and redevelop in the future. We have the Citizen Advisory Committee, as Heather mentioned, a technical advisory committee, and those folks are listed on the inside of your, you know, first page there of your plans. You can kind of see where those folks are affiliated. Of course, several of you were involved as well. And this is just a slide from our first community open house. We talked about existing conditions and asked the community for ideas and information about what they knew about the area, as well as what their aspirations were for its future. So advisory committee meetings, not only did the advisory committee meet to kind of absorb information and give us feedback after their first meeting where they explored existing conditions, and I gave them a lot of information about the market analysis and existing land use and transportation conditions. They kind of took that information and went and had a separate meeting to do a design charrette, to really roll up their sleeves, get the markers out with staff, and look at, you know, again, how things needed to be better connected, what were the opportunities for those connections and future land uses, what they wanted to see, what the advisory committee wanted to see the area kind of develop into. A similar process, what happened with the property owners in kind of a separate work session, and from that, a series of case studies evolved. There's some, the slide presents or shows kind of some of those that work. That was really led by the urban designer and really driven by economics, so getting some kind of real-world scenario planning, if you will, and mostly focused on those larger opportunity areas, the places where there was, you know, real opportunity for future employment growth in particular. And then the open houses, there were two in-person open houses. The second was the town hall-style meeting where we had specific conversations about solutions, land use scenarios. So all those materials, or a lot of that material, is found in Appendix A. So you have the actual draft plan as well as a series of appendices, and Appendix A has more information and materials from those two open houses. This is just a process slide that kind of shows how the plan was developed, you know, really starting from those ideas from the design charrette and the case studies, you know, taking those ideas and developing three distinct land use scenarios, again, supported by the transportation network. And then, you know, taking those scenarios and evaluating them against the project objectives, and all of that was shared with the advisory committees and the public in that second town hall open house. From that, we developed a kind of preferred land use option and took that through some detailed analysis and implementation work. So, you know, with a kind of a good idea about the community's preference, the consultant team, you know, kind of did a lot of background work, set up some implementation steps, and then all of that was shared with the advisory committee just last month. So now we're really kind of at the end of the process where we do have a draft plan. And from that, with some more refinements, we can kind of get you to an adoption draft. So as Heather said, the consultant team leaves you at the end of this month, but the process goes on. So let's see. Right, I think this is kind of my last slide before I'm going to take a breath here, but in the last month or so, we've been compiling the elements of this draft plan that you have. And then in addition, we have an appendices that has really those supporting documents that inform the community and help shape the plan. So with that, I'm going to take a pause and ask if there are any specific process questions or and/or if those who were involved with some of these activities, if you'd like to share something or if I've forgotten something that you'd like to emphasize, this would be a good time.
So let's go ahead and open it up to the Planning Commission and City Council. Are there any questions for Darcy? Go ahead, Remy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am, let me find this in my packet here. There was a mention in the packet about developing housing on the west side of the area, and then later on, there was also some notes about potential housing around, I forget what you call it, the healthcare area or the hospital area. And I'm wondering if you could maybe on one of these maps, show us kind of what that, where that, where you, what is intended with west side of the development? And then I'm also wondering if you can talk about housing a little bit more in terms of percentages of land used for housing? And if that was some, if that, if that specific data point was in here and I don't remember it, then I apologize.
Yes, I can get into a little bit more of the, kind of the areas that are really changing in this plan, and that part of that has to do with the residential piece that you're talking about. I won't be able to get to numbers, although I know we have that in our analysis, and it's in your appendices, and I know we don't want to go digging through that, but I think those questions can be answered for you after this meeting. So I will hopefully answer your questions as I get into the specific areas of the plan. So if you'll hold your question and make sure that I don't forget it, we can get into that in a little bit.
Any other questions? So see if it's going to be a part of the presentation or any specific questions.
This is Gary Langen-Walter. I've got a question.
Go ahead, Gary.
Actually, I have three questions.
Okay.
Number one, on page 12 of the document, it showed the original timeline, given that we've had COVID and a few other, you know, life instances that happened. Is that timeline still even halfway accurate or, you know, where are we on that timeline? Question number two is on page 20. The first bullet talks about ownership, you know, being, homeownership being really the way things happen. The second bullet says, yes, but most of this will wind up being rentals. I said, say what? I'm not criticizing, just curious. And the final question is on page 49, which talks about a roundabout. I lived in Massachusetts, we had a lot of roundabouts, and when I left, they were trying to replace roundabouts because they didn't like them. Roundabouts, you know, in a city were fine for me, but a roundabout on a highway? Is that something we really want to do? So that's my three questions, and thank you.
I was going to say, that last one, I think you could spend an hour on that one for sure. So I noticed right away that I have different page numbers, and I think you must be referring to page numbers in your packet versus page numbers of the plan?
Yeah, so Darcy, the first question, which was process-related, was on page six of the plan. It's the schedule and whether or not COVID impacted that because we're not on that schedule anymore.
Right, and we have a placeholder to update that graphic, and it's funny the way you phrased it. I think it is half correct, and the latter half needs to be modified, and we were hoping to put kind of a graphic that explained the process, but we did not update that yet.
And Gary, just to let you know, I guess I would say it wasn't COVID so much as it was, the opportunity existed to update the transportation model for McMinnville. It hadn't been updated, I don't know when it was last updated, but TPAW, which is the Modeling Group for ODOT, wanted to update it. To do so, we had to go through a fairly precise process of identifying how growth would occur and where it would occur, but do it within the legal parameters of our urban growth boundary discussions that we had been having. So it was a very careful and nuanced navigation of that process to make sure we were getting the right numbers in there. And so that took us probably about, I don't know, 14 months maybe to update the transportation model, and I think took us longer than any of us had anticipated, but it allowed us all, so ODOT and the city and DLCD, to feel comfortable with the final results, which are impactful from both a funding perspective and also from a administration and management perspective of the highway system.
And Heather, I'm not criticizing any project this big. You can either come in on schedule or you can come in with a high-quality project. You can pick. I'd rather have a high-quality project because I get to live with the result for a long time.
Right.
Thank you for doing it right.
And I will say, Michael Duncan's on the line, too, on the Zoom call. He is our ODOT project manager. This TGM grant expired probably a year ago this time, and he's gone to bat for us to get extensions on the funding so we could do the transportation modeling and get through the process. So, and he went to bat for us on several occasions to extend the deadline, so we appreciate that.
Thank you.
And I think we should come back to the housing question again when we get into the elements of the land use plan. And Heather, I'll need help with the page number on that one, too, when we get there. And then the roundabouts, Andy is going to be all over that question, and we'll get to that as well.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
Right on. So.
Any other questions? You can either speak up or raise your hand. I'm going through everyone just to see if hands are raised.
While you're doing that, Mayor, I just wanted to reiterate that one of the things we negotiated as part of the scope of work for this project right up front, and that I thought was a successful aspect of it, it was a charrette with the three property owners that own the 200 acres of vacant industrial land on the south side of Highway 18. And by bringing them together into a room and having a dialogue about what are your long-term plans for this property, how do you see these properties interacting with each other, how can these properties serve McMinnville and its future? First of all, they hadn't, had never met, so even though they have neighboring large chunks of property, they had never met and gotten together. So just breaking that barrier of discussion was important. And then they all came to the table with, we want, you know, we are looking at long-term opportunities for the property. They are in the city, and they've been in the city limits since the '70s, so they're meant to be developed. They're farming them right now. And they, but they want to do it in such a way that it's supporting the community's values and principles. And so they were at the table throughout the whole process, and actually, part of this is an advisory committee meetings and coming to all the open houses so they could hear what the community wanted to see happen on those properties as well. So that was, I think that that's a great outcome of, aspect of this project.
Thank you for that insight, Heather. I don't see any other questions, so Darcy, I think we can move forward.
Okay, because they are such good questions, I'm going to try to go very fast here. So just to run through some foundational elements, some things that basically just sort of solidified as the underpinnings of this plan, it really didn't matter what land uses, we really looked at, these were going to be the same. Our urban growth boundary, we were looking inside, we were not looking at any adjustments, you know, shrinking or growing, protecting the airport operations, very important, really no changes in the immediate area of the airport, and that this, anything that was proposed was going to be connected, right? Existing neighborhoods connected to existing employment opportunities, connected to new opportunities for retail employment. For the transportation, we knew that Cumulus Avenue was going to be connected to Norton Lane, that we would want complete streets to kind of develop the areas that were not yet developed, that the bridge is going to be improved, new and improved bicycle and pedestrian connections throughout the planned area was important. So this idea of complete streets design, you have this already for McMinnville in your code and your transportation system plan as well, but in this area, a little bit different, a little bit more right-of-way, but also right-of-way for sidewalks, planer strips, accommodating bicycles. So little tweak there to the design of local streets and the collectors in this area. So that's a change to your transportation system plan, that's in your implementation portion of the draft plan. And these are just the accompanying cross-sections. Again, the standards are to encourage biking, walking, safety, you know, this idea of a complete street, it's not just for moving cars, you're also accommodating stormwater treatment, greenery, street trees, et cetera. So that's the major collector cross-section, and the local residential. And I don't believe these are in your draft plan at the moment. I think they should be, so we'll find a place for those. Some other foundational elements, urban design, very important, really address the desire for landscape and architectural features, connections to nature, and the importance of preserving views and gateway treatments. You know, this should be, you know, there's You know, this should be, you know, there should be an announcement that you're entering a special area and that you're entering the city of McMinnville. Parks and trails, connections of trails was a really important feature of the plan. And then providing access to the Yamhill River, also a key foundational element. And then this idea of gateways, these are just examples of gateway treatments. The plan really isn't prescriptive. It's not saying how McMinnville needs to, you know, create this entry or these entry points. But it is clear, the plan is clear about the desire for those, for something like that. And can really emphasize that scale is going to be important, right? You can't have just a little tiny monument sign that really, the scale needs to match really the landscape and the area that you're coming into. So this gets to the preferred alternative and the plan. So this is really the envisioned land use map with the possible gateway locations in the red asterixes. So both gateways on the east and the west. And it shows how connections are made, trail languages, the bicycle and pedestrian network. So this is kind of the whole thing in a package. And as I promised, we were going to zoom into some specific areas, some areas that really are envisioned for change. And also changes to your underlying comprehensive plan land use map. So this portion, this northeast portion in particular, north of Cumulus, was envisioned as a mixed-use area. So this really is predominantly the Baker Rock site. You know, looking again as a long-range proposition. You know, that area might be better used for other types of uses than the kind of light industrial that's on there today. So the key urban design elements, we have a list of them and the plan associated with the mixed use. And there's also a conceptual design. So even a more zoomed in, a view of how that area could redevelop over time, particularly the connections made through it. This is a change from an industrial land use designation to a commercial and a residential. So again, the commercial would allow for that idea of mixed use in the residential portion as you're headed north towards the river. It transitions to residential and is a kind of a transition between, you know, future kind of higher density residential and the lower density residential to the north. Let's, south of the highway where it says office, this is also a change. Not only from industrial to commercial, but also there is a residential piece as well. And these changes are shown in your implementation portion of the plan for the comprehensive plan changes. So they're highlighted where those changes are happening. So that is one of kind of the key areas, what we call them kind of opportunity areas, but areas where there could be some change guided by this plan. This portion really illustrates the opportunity for land use around the Lamont Valley Medical Center. You know, this idea of a kind of healthcare cluster. There's some synergies that can happen when uses collect over time and our, you know, similar uses will develop in proximity to each other. It also shows this retail center idea. Again, this would be a change from the underlying industrial to commercial. And then the innovation campus, more of, you know, a corporate industrial campus idea. And the plan basically describes how the, particularly the retail center could develop, key features of that, as well as some precedent images, some example images of other commercial areas in the Northwest that have good elements that could be incorporated here. And then finally, kind of this third focus area really was exploring connectivity to the Evergreen Complex, safe biking and walking connections to Highway 18, enhancing tourism. So really, again, building on uses that are already in the area today and really, you know, finding ways to enhance tourism. And then the gateway locations, of course, being very central to that idea. So I, just a few series of slides with some images. Again, the walkable commercial center, you know, focusing on connectivity, multimodal connectivity for sure. These are some photographs, again, sort of precedents, some images that evoke what could be appropriate in that area in McMinnville. So there are a list of features again in the plan that really describes this. But we're looking here at a walkable, narrow kind of main street concept that goes through the center, buildings that really create a frontage that's comfortable for pedestrians. So you're looking at a lot of windows and kind of human scale features, generous landscaping buffers between retailers and things like the roadways and parking lots. And then proximity and connections to other uses. So people can walk, you know, from residential areas, from employment areas to this commercial center. And the idea really was that this was an opportunity to provide goods and services to folks that are in the area working already, students who are going to school already in the area. Really not to compete with downtown, but to create, you know, a local serving center. So this is what some of the pictures are really showing. So the innovation campus, again, Cam provided some images of industrial users that could, again, this looks like something could easily be in Three Mile Lane. I think he said this was a simple soap company. So again, the plan isn't super prescriptive of what should go in that, you know, innovation campus area, but really provides a lot of examples, offers kind of a vision and examples of corporate campuses that really have connections to a place. Here's some more photographs. So the plan identifies that this is really a prime location near the Yamhill River. There's potential for trails and orientation, you know, orienting buildings and gathering areas to take advantage of views and to take advantage of natural features on the river. And then the mixed-use neighborhoods, again, some similar, you know, commercial features where we're looking at creating a grid through either developing or redeveloping areas. In the case of the Baker Rock site, you know, allowing a variety of commercial residential uses, you know, in close proximity to each other. And here, you know, it's vertical building, mixed use. Again, locally serving retail and services and in that multimodal connectivity. So that does not 100%. There's another picture there. Doesn't 100% answer the questions about the amount of residential? Talks a little bit about what's allowed and what's envisioned for that mixed-use area. If we're interested in sort of acres of residential, both existing or acres that would be changed from industrial to residential, I think we can get those numbers for you. Was there a follow-up question that maybe I'm not quite getting at what was being asked?
I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead, Heather. I just want to see, Gary, did that answer as best as Darcy could your question about the residential development?
It was very interesting, but it didn't seem to answer my question. The question is, when the first bullet on page, it'd be page 14, said, you know, people are into, primarily into home ownership, ownership, ownership. And the second bullet says, well, forget the first bullet, most of this will be rental. I thought, what?
Yeah, so just if I could explain a little bit about that. So Gary, that, what that's doing is it's, it's providing the results of the market analysis that we did. So another, another part of the scope of work was this in-depth market analysis. What Darcy's sharing with, and Andy are sharing with you tonight is the outcomes of all the other work products that we did to get to this outcome. The market analysis was done early on in the project. And it looked at, you know, where is the market supportive of different types of uses? And what it said was, in McMinnville, and this is no surprise to anyone, the strongest housing market is a single-family residential unit. However, this area, the way that it's, that it's developed already and where the development opportunities are, is not really conducive to single-family residential development. So the land that's left for residential is really more conducive to multifamily development. So the market analysis then looked at high-rise structure multifamily development versus low-rise structure multifamily development and concluded that the low-rise structure multifamily development would be the type of housing that would work in this area. And that's what that second bullet point talks about.
Okay, and I'm not trying to make anybody wrong. I'm just sort of curious because bullet two didn't seem to follow from bullet one.
Yeah, no, so bullet one is saying, for overall for the city, this is where the market area is the strongest. But for this particular area, what made the most sense was the low-rise structural apartments.
And that was on page 14 of the draft document.
Yeah, and the economic analysis is in the append, I think it's appendix B, I believe. But it's very interesting. So it also showed us where we have leakage occurring in the community. We have about $97 million a year leaking out of the community for general goods. It showed that we have, also have a lot of leakage in restaurant spending, which was surprising to many of us because McMinnville is known as a foodie community. But there are people who are clearly going to other communities for goods and services, general goods and services, and then spending time in restaurants there. And so that informed the discussion about, you know, some of the land out here should transform into commercial development to capture that, those dollars that are leaving the community for general goods so that we can capture the other dollars that are leaving as well for our local restaurant purveyors. So there's a lot of different complicated detailed nuances that sort of built into this final land use scenario that Darcy's going through with you.
Okay, well, thank you. That answered my question. I appreciate it.
Good questions, Gary.
Thank you, Mayor Hill.
And then the other question for Councilor Drapkin. We actually aren't rezoning or changing the comp plan very much to support residential uses out here. Because in McMinnville, our commercial zone, our C3 zone, allows high-density residential development. And that's what we're looking for in terms of the housing sector for the developable land here. A lot of the commercial land that Darcy just went through with you is residential, plugged for residential as a land use is actually Zone C3 and can be accommodated through that zoning as is. There's a map in the near future, I think, that's in this deck of slides. It shows the comp plan changes that are recommended. And they're fairly small comp plan changes that need to occur to support this preferred land use scenario. And just, just to add to that, the preferred land use scenario dives deep into the different uses. It's not, it's not, it doesn't, they talk about the land uses in regards to how we talk about zoning. So commercial zones, industrial zones, residential zones. So some of those uses that we're talking about are already allowed in the underlying zoning as well. We're just targeting them even further because there's already a planned development overlay on this whole area called the Three Mile Lane Overlay ordinance that was put into place in the 90s. And it describes what types of uses can occur. It has several different zones, and it tightens up those underlying zones. So the underlying zone could say, these 25 uses are allowed. And then the planned development overlay says, these 13 of the 25 uses are allowed in this area. To really get it targeted into a niche. So we're looking at it from that perspective and we'll be revising that Three Mile Lane planned development overlay in terms of the use structure to steer it in the direction of this preferred land use alternative. I hope that helps. Crickets.
Remy just gave a thumbs up, so it did help her. Okay.
So let's go to some transportation facility design for the highway. And Andy, if you will take us through the next few slides here. I sure hope Andy will. It'll get interesting if the land use planner describes the facility design. I can get real creative.
Right, can you hear me okay?
I scared him. I scared him out. I flushed him out. Go ahead, Andy.
Welcome, Andy.
Yeah, thanks for having us back, Mr. Mayor and councilors and planning commissioners. In the next few slides, I'm going to cover some of the transportation planning pieces of our study work that's reflective of our advisory group and citizen participation and comments along the way. So Darcy, are you running the slideshow? Can you?
I am. You just tell me when to go.
Right, so several months ago, we brought forward, both to our technical and citizen advisory committee, two key transportation system options by concept design that would help maintain the function of Highway 18 and provide good circulation and access to land uses within the planned area. And the first of those options was called the interchange option. It included, you know, reconstructing the interchange for full mobility through the existing junction of Three Mile Lane and Highway 18 west of Norton Lane. And a new interchange at Cumulus Avenue that would replace the traffic signal there today. And a roundabout at Cirrus Avenue. I'll come back to that point in just a little bit. But the Norton Lane signal would be removed and replaced with an overcrossing for vehicular, bike and pet connections. And there is a possibility of new pedestrian and bicycle overpasses linking the north and south side of the study area. But there'd be a series of continued extension of Cumulus and Stratus avenues as frontage road connections that would provide east-west circulatory connectivity and eventual access to and across Highway 18 at those interchanges and overcrosses. So that was the interchange option. The next option was a series of roundabouts at Norton, Cumulus and Cirrus. Roundabouts would replace the Norton Lane and the Cumulus Avenue traffic signals. And the new Cirrus Avenue roundabout is similar to the one on the previous option. But again, the interchange at Highway 18 and Three Mile Lane would be fully reconstructed for full mobility through that interchange. And so that constituted the second concept design option that we wanted to measure with the community. You know, what could possibly be the perceived advantages and disadvantages of each of those options so that we can come up with a preferred alternative to carry forward into further assessment and analysis. And working with the citizens advisory group, we had no consensus on either of those two options. And the group agreed that the following preferred facility design was more of a consensus building, design concept for the community to move forward with. And that included, and I'll run through those here a little bit in more detail, you know, the reconstruction of the Three Mile Lane interchange. And what that means is that if you're traveling either eastbound or westbound on 18, you can exit and get to both downtown and the study area. Because today, if you're traveling eastbound, if you exit at Three Mile Lane, you have to go all the way down to Norton Lane, make a U-turn or cross over onto Cumulus and travel back westbound in order to get on Three Mile Lane and cross the river and get into downtown. It would be more ideal to be able to get off and turn left at the interchange and cross over 18. And also, you can't get to downtown from the southern side of the study area traveling through the interchange. You have to go up to the Norton signal and get onto Highway 18. So the whole point of that interchange reconstruction is to provide more local connectivity for both vehicular, bicycle and pedestrian connectivity in the study area. And I'm going to take And I'm going to take one small deviation from this conversation. I see that Mark Davis is on the call. It's good to see you again, Mark. But back in 2010, when we were adopting the transportation system plan, Mark brought some really prescient comments that were reiterated by many of the participants in our study, who either lived or owned land in the area. And that is that the connectivity between downtown and the study area is horrible. It's really difficult to get between the Three Mile Lane area and the central city by bike or by foot. And Mark's comments were carried forward in the TSP, and I think they're lived out here by many of the participants who echoed those same comments. So, that interchange is really important. And we'll go into more discussion about that if you have questions of it. Carrying forward, though, the concept of the preferred facility design retained the signals at Norton Lane and Cumulus Avenue, included these frontage road improvements, both on the north side of Highway eighteen and the south side, so that you could make local trips, either by car or by foot or by bike, without having to get onto Highway eighteen. And then finally, there's a Cirrus Avenue roundabout in the front of the airport. And these frontage road improvements would connect to Norton Lane, Cumulus, and the Cirrus Avenue. The preferred facility design, then, with those connectivity improvements, would include removal of some of the private driveway connections between the Evergreen Campus south of eighteen directly to Highway eighteen. And it revises the connectivity to Old Stone Village. And what's not on this map, you know, are the connections of Kirkshank Road and Loop Road, which is kind of a dog's breakfast. Many of you probably travel through that junction at some point in time during your week. And oh, my gosh, at four forty-five or five thirty in the afternoon, trying to turn left from Kirkshank Road, coming from Salem to get into downtown McMinnville, that is a trying test of driver nerve. And so, one of the reasons why a roundabout was considered as an option here is it helped provide a reconnection of Loop Road via the Old Stone Village connection to this roundabout. But the Yamhill County Plan has a roundabout as part of their plan at the Lafayette Highway Junction. And it was felt that a continuation of that concept might be a suitable design measure to accommodate both local access but a continuation of travel flow on Highway eighteen, rather than the installation of a new traffic signal that would repetitively stop through traffic occasionally. And that was why that roundabout option was carried forward in the preferred facility design. We'll talk a little bit more about that, I think, in the question and answer discussion here. But so, that's what really constitutes the preferred facility design for our study that's reflective of the advisory group's input in consideration of other options that they looked at. And we felt this reflected more of a consensus of that group's thoughts and input to the planning process.
Andy, can I stop you for a moment? And Adam, you have a question?
I just had a couple of things about the preferred facility design. The Loop Road thing, I wholeheartedly agree with. And being able to connect both ways coming up that interchange sounds like a great idea for pedestrians and people going each way. I just was curious, you know, what our risk is putting in that many stoplights of basically just shifting the Dundee issue down the highway twenty miles or however far it is. It just seems like putting in three or four stoplights is going to jam everything up. Or ODOT would want to have that be a forty-five hour zone anymore.
So, there's a couple of things there, Adam, or councillor, that I'd like to reply to. There's a technical process by which we gauge, at what point in time does traffic grow significantly where traffic signals are inappropriate to handle large volumes of travel. And what Heather had elaborated on in refining and updating the McMinnville travel demand model, the whole purpose of that was to gauge whether the existing traffic signals, if their lifetime really extended beyond the twenty-year planning horizon or not. That was the big question that we wanted to test in terms of overall travel demand. And what we found was that the existing signals would still provide sufficient capacity for both east-west through movement on Highway eighteen and local access and circulation from land uses on the north and south side of the study area. The other big piece of the conversation with the advisory group was the concern of Highway eighteen becoming by design a physical barrier for local traffic, vehicular, but more importantly, pet and bike travel north and south between the study area, subareas. There was fear that Highway eighteen would become too much of a barrier if all we were to do were to jump ahead and just put another interchange in and close all of the signals down. And we heard from consensus of the advisory group is, let's see that the system can live as long as it possibly can within the twenty-year planning horizon and see whether or not the future travel demand's going to exhaust the ability of those traffic signals to provide service to the community and the highway travel in the corridor. And what we found was that the signals at Norton and Cumulus will work okay in the future. They're within the acceptable operational standards by the Oregon Highway Plan. And we're not suggesting that removal of those signals and installation of new interchanges are needed within the twenty-year planning horizon. But we need to preserve and protect rights of way and the footprint for eventual interchange development beyond the twenty-year planning horizon. And these frontage road improvements are critical for both timeframes. So, you know, I know if you were to look at just the, you know, I just want to drive through McMinnville and get there as quick as I can, boy, I don't want to stop at all of these signals. But that's not a happy answer for landowners, residents, and business, and industry who, you know, are looking within the study area for, you know, their local circulation and access needs. So, that's the balance act that we were trying to provide in the study.
Andy, isn't it true, though, also, ODOT has standards for spacing standards for controlled intersections on their different types of facilities? So, this is an expressway, which is one of the higher types of facilities, and this still meets their spacing standards for controlled intersections. In terms of Dundee, that's a one-lane road through a very tight commercial corridor. And then Newburgh, the lights are either every block or every two blocks. So, that means they're every five hundred, six hundred feet. And, you know, what we're looking at here is a separation much larger than that. It just doesn't look like that on the map right here. But doesn't, this is in compliance with ODOT spacing standards for controlled intersections on expressways.
That's correct. And you'll see that.
Thank you for that.
Yeah. You'll see that in the junction spacing data on the map.
That was all great information and put a lot of my concerns to rest, so thank you. The only other thing I had left was that stoplight, which I'm going to call the Three Mile Lane light, where it comes after you go over the bridge. If traffic is coming northbound on eighteen and wanting to go left, and there's that new interchange there, how does that back up or how does that interface to where you won't have, like, backed-up traffic, eighteen entering that Three Mile Lane corridor?
Right. Councillor, in a few slides from now, we're going to have a better picture of what the layout of that's going to look like. And if you can wait until we address that slide, I think we'll have the answer for you.
Okay. Thank you.
We've got Beth has a question, and then councillor Chenoweth.
Yes. Thank you. I have two. One is related to Norton Lane, that access. We, what, a couple of months ago, at the commission meeting, we gave approval for a second ordering lane at the McDonald's there. And a discussion came up about how that's going to be an attractive nuisance to the public housing that is probably going, is going to be going in just to the west of the motel and medical complex on the south side there. And so, we raised the question of whether we could have a pedestrian overpass, so those kids will be safe. And I don't know that you guys heard that, because that happened just a few months ago, that we came up with that viewpoint.
No. And one of the previous options, we did have a pedestrian bicycle overpass in there, but we felt that it was probably going to be a really expensive feature to put in. It certainly could be considered as part of the interchange redesign, but that's going to take several years yet for it to become to fruition. And I think it's an important thing to remember as part of the plan as it goes through implementation. So, I think your point is well-taken. We weren't aware of the conversation around McDonald's, but it's not a surprise. We were included in on previous options. You know, if the Norton Lane traffic signal were to be removed, then definitely an overpass would be necessary in order to make that connection. But we're relying more on the connection crossing there at Norton Lane at grade through a traffic signal. And there'll need to be some pedestrian enhancements, you know, as part of any signal improvements there over time.
And that's my second question also. But it's up on the other side of the Three Mile New Bridge, where access from pedestrians would need to cross into Joe Dancer Park if they're walking. I actually had someone in the community contact me today about that. So, can we get an enhanced crossing there, pedestrian crossing there? Because volume's going to be up.
Yes. There's a couple of things there that are not on this map. What we also found is traffic at A Street and Three Mile Lane is going to be awfully tough to make, you know, turns off of First Street, you know, going north or southbound from either direction. So, we think a signal or some type of traffic control improvement's going to be necessary at first. And so, that might be a way you can consolidate, you know, the pet and bike crossings of Three Mile Lane at that junction. It might be just a slight one-block out of direction, but that's going to be a combination solution that'll likely take up some of the detail in your transportation system plan update that's coming in a year or so. But the other part of that is, with the bridge improvements, you're going to have bicycle and pedestrian improvements on both sides of the bridge. And that'll touch down, you know, just shy of the Joe Dancer Park connection. So, I hear you loud and clear. I think, you know, a consolidated crossing improvement at A Street's probably going to be a better solution, rather than trying to put two solutions, you know, in close proximity to each other. Because I don't think you'll warrant a traffic signal at the Joe Dancer Park connection. And so, I think a safer way to do that would be to consolidate that crossing at A Street.
We're also, Commissioner Rankin, one of the things that we didn't go into detail on in terms of the preferred land use alternative is it has a lot of planned bike pedestrian paths that are off-street, trail systems, both on the north and south side, to connect amenities as well as open spaces. And one of them is a planned connection across the river to Joe Dancer Park, because the residential neighborhoods living in this area don't have access to a large community park. That's going to be a tough uphill climb, because it's a protected environment and the design will be unique. But there are communities who have been able to do it. And so, we wanted to put it in the plan for dialogue and exploration in the future.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead, Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have several questions. First, into a question that Heather Richards made reference to Newburgh and their light spacing, is it considered an expressway through Newburgh? So, I would think that the light spacing of Newburgh would be apples and oranges to what we're doing here, since this is considered an expressway. Second.
Councillor, if I could quickly add, today, ninety-nine W is not considered an expressway, but the plan for the Newburgh-Dundee bypass is for Highway, that to be the expressway designed facility. So, that part of the next phases of the Newburgh-Dundee bypass would be the expressway.
What is Highway eighteen considered?
Highway eighteen in this particular corridor is an expressway.
Right. So, we should be looking, instead of looking to lighting and structuring similar to Newburgh, downtown, we're going to be looking more, anyway, that's all my point. We shouldn't be comparing the downtown Newburgh light structuring to what we're looking at here on Highway eighteen. That's an apple course.
So, I was just trying to answer the councillor Garvin's question, which asked if we were building something that was going to create another Newburgh situation. And so, what I was trying to share was, it's not the same. And ODOT has standards for their different classifications of facilities in terms of spacing standards for controlled intersections. And Highway eighteen is an expressway, which is different than the Highway ninety-nine as it goes through Newburgh. So, we would never get to that point where we have the same spacing standard.
Well, I hope not. But I am concerned with, along with councillor Garvin, about the number of lights we're going to be putting in here and the results of the backup that's going to take place there, particularly on a Friday and Sunday. So, I mean, that is, when you put in, we go from one to three lights in a roundabout, that's going to result in some pretty heavy traffic changes.
Yeah. If I could add, the Cumulus Avenue signal exists today, so you have two today. And the preferred alternative includes only the addition of a roundabout, which would not regularly stop Highway eighteen traffic. Highway eighteen traffic through the roundabout would have more of the majority of the through put operational capacity of that junction than a traffic light would probably be not as good.
The Cumulus light is the light that you use to turn into the Evergreen Campus.
Yeah.
So, which brings me to my next question. What's the speed limit through one of these roundabouts?
The operational design would be to seek thirty to thirty-five miles an hour. And so, you'd have to do a wag in the approach and bring traffic down to speed as you're entering the urban area from the east. But again, the notion of the roundabout there was a carryover from the adopted roundabout plan for Lafayette Highway, Highway eighteen, that's included in the Yamhill County Plan. So, there'll have to be some coordination between the plans to moderate by design, you know, the intended design speed between those two future roundabouts.
So, currently, going from Old Stone Village all the way to halfway between Cumulus and Norton, it's fifty-five. The drop-down takes someplace between Cumulus and Norton. Now, you're saying that that whole stretch is going to drop down to thirty-five at the roundabout. And if that light stays, is it going to be posted that we're going to drop down that whole length? Is this going to be a new speed limit?
ODOT has standards for speed limits on their expressway, and I think there's some confusion here. So, ODOT has different classifications for their facilities, and they have design standards to maintain those classifications. Those classifications are relative to speed and mobility and throughput. This design meets all those standards. It's the expressway design for speed will remain the same. What will happen, though, is we have safety issues because we have too many driveway accesses in this area by Cirrus onto Highway eighteen. What this plan does is it shuts down those driveway accesses. So, Andy walked through what the different roads are that would be shut down, that would no longer have access to Highway eighteen. And the access would happen on frontage roads and then occur at the roundabout. This is an ODOT-funded project, the planning project. So, this has gone through all the ODOT review. It still needs to go through the Mobility Advisory Committee, which will be reviewing it for mobility and throughput. But it's gone through their standards review in terms of their rules and classifications for their facilities.
And that may be fine, but I still don't want to end up, whether it's gone through their rules and their standards, that doesn't mean that the end result is going to end up with a situation that isn't going to end up adversely affecting all those who are living out there. who are living out there. And, and I'm, I have concerns, this layout, it doesn't, I, I think we're looking at dropping that speed zone at least by 20 miles an hour, and, and it's having severe congestion on Friday and Sunday. And that's concerning to me. So I just wanted to kind of go through that and see if, if the answers were going to alleviate that concern. And so far, they're not really doing that, but thank you.
Andy, it might be helpful if you provide some distancing between the different controlled mechanisms on the highway, because I think people are, I think that in terms of viewing this map, they're, they're thinking that these controlled, controlled mechanisms on the highway are closer than they actually are.
Right. The distance between the Three Mile Lane and Highway 18 interchange today in Norton Lane is just under 3,000 feet. So it's a little more than a half a mile. And between Norton and Cumulus, it's almost 3,700 feet. And then between Cumulus and Cirrus, that's about almost 3,400 feet. So that spacing is quite a bit, well, it's within the state's street intersection spacing standards for urban and rural expressway highways of, of freight route and statewide significance. And there's plenty of distance between there to travel through the junctions and pick up speed again and travel through the adjoining intersection.
Yeah.
So, so I'd like to also add that if, one of the things that the, the study participants didn't want to just jump out and say is let's, let's go to, you know, putting a new interchange at Cumulus and taking out the signal at Norton and, and putting all the frontage roads and putting a new interchange in it at 18. And then the question is, who can afford to do that within 20 years? It's not likely that that solution is going to be afforded within the next 20 years. McMinnville would be fortunate to get ODOT participation to help reconstruct the existing interchange and likely not get two interchanges within the next 20 years. So by volume demand, it's not warranted to get another interchange than the one we have. And it's probably not practical to assume that the state would be able to fund that solution. So when we met with our group, it was a balancing act. It was how do we protect the, the, the function of Highway 18 without shutting down access for existing and local land development, you know, within the study area? And so I, I would just reply that, you know, I felt like this was a good consensus when those competitive interests were discussed and rationalized, you know, in that conversation. It's not ideal for any one particular person, certainly not on a busy Friday afternoon for westbound travelers to the coast or eastbound travelers on Sunday. But I, but I would add, you know, you, you don't build and construct a facility for those two peak periods. And I know that they're uncomfortable at times, but I don't think this community can afford that solution for, for those two extremes. And this was a, this was a balance for that.
That, that interchange solution has been on the books for 40 years, and that's also one of the reasons why the property has not developed, because of the cost of the interchange.
Fair enough. And thank you very much for answering the questions. I, you know, I got to ask the questions to, to try to get the answers to what's going on in my brain. So I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We've got Sid and then we've got Gary that have their hands up, and we need to keep moving along because we're probably down to about 15 minutes now.
Yeah, just a quick, quick point. I, I do think, and I'm sure Andy can, can expand on this, maybe to help relieve a little bit of Councilor Tino's concerns, is that I, with all the other highways and stuff that I have driven on with the upgraded ones in Seattle and everywhere else, the lights and the timing have changed now. So you're not stuck. And I'm sure that on Fridays and the peak periods, that there will be opportunities for timing so that things don't get backed up and that we have the technology now so things don't get as crazy as his concerns, especially since we do not have the resources to do a frontage road. Just a comment.
Yeah. And, and that is assumed and implied that in the, the future technological enhancements that are, that are happening and will continue to improve the signal operations there.
Go ahead, Gary.
There, had, had to unmute. Yeah, I lived in Massachusetts for 16 years and there was a major rotary, which is what they call it, roundabout, on a major state highway. My concern is this, coming in from the Portland area, coming in, if we're driving 55 miles an hour nominally, and people sometimes drive 60 to 65, hitting a 35 mile an hour roundabout is going to be unwelcome and perhaps accident prone, just because people don't want to slow down that much. It'll be a choke point of a 25 or 20 mile an hour difference between the road you're traveling on and trying to get through the interchange. Would, would it be more intelligent to put a light there instead?
Counselor, you're going to have the same issue with needing to reduce travel speeds at a traffic signal as you do at a roundabout. Roundabouts by design can provide a way to moderate, you know, the slowdown so that you maintain movement through a roundabout rather than taking your chances that you're likely going to, you know, every third time you come into town, you're going to have to stop at a signal at Cirrus, as you do at Cumulus, even though the Cumulus volume on the side street is so small. But your chances of starting at Norton, stopping at Norton at the signal are, are more, more frequent than, than Cumulus Avenue intersection. I'm not saying it's ideal, and I'm not advocating for a roundabout in its, in its, in its dire need for the plan, but it does have the ability to maintain flow, which, which means minimizing the actual time that you would actually stop at that junction when you're a Highway 18 traveler. The signals are going to, in, in all reality and logic, you're going to, you're going to have to stop at those signals, even if you're traveling east and westbound on Highway 18 regardless.
You know, Andy, I, I've made my point and I'll, I'll stop so that we can move on to other things.
Yeah, and I'll just make a point, Andy, that, you know, in the preliminary workings of the bypass, the intersection on Highway 18 and the new bypass phase three is going to be a roundabout. We've, we've determined that, and it all comes back down to cost. If you, if you, if you wait and do the big interchanges, you'll never have the money and it'll never get done, and we're not going to be able to develop the, the Three Mile Lane area because of that.
And I, and I will say, it's really important for this group as a whole to tell us whether, you know, this is a continued reflection of the consensus of the community. We're not saying, you know, the plan is, is, is off kilter if you can't have the roundabout. We need to hear from you. That's, that's why we're here.
But Andy, to the point, to that point, the Citizen Advisory Committee recommended the roundabout because a roundabout is also planned at Lafayette and Highway 18. So just up the road east of here is a roundabout. And so people will be getting into the habit of approaching those, but it keeps traffic moving rather than stopping. The, the roundabout, we expect to be a conversation piece with the mobility advise, with the ODOT Mobility Advisory Committee who thinks about freight and how, how the larger freight rigs can get through the different types of improvements. So we expect that that might come up with them, and there might be need to have a discussion of a signal instead of a roundabout.
Yep. But I, I would emphasize that some additional traffic control is needed at, at the entrance of the community. Otherwise, too much traffic is going to be coming in from some of the existing driveways and side streets, and you'll, you'll see a safety issue rise, you know, without some enhanced traffic control at the eastern end of Cirrus Avenue.
We've got Council President Drapkin, your hand was up and then it went down and it was up again. So do you have a question?
I, I was just going to say that we seem to be getting caught in some minutia, and I've got in a lot of meetings with discussions of roundabouts, and there's always a lot of conversation up front. And there's rarely, in my limited experience, there's rarely a lot of conversation afterwards, and I just wanted to make sure we had time for the rest of the presentation.
Thank you. Okay, let's move forward. We, we're down to, I'd say seven minutes because we, we need to, we need to get on to the council meeting at seven o'clock, so.
Andy, it'd be good to get to the implementation and the capital improvement costs pieces of it, because we've talked a lot about the improvements.
And these, these images are in the plan, so perhaps we can just go straight to the implementation. Does that sound good?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, Andy, we'll go through these. And so basically, in the implementation plan, we are looking at changes to the transportation system plan, so updates to include the complete street standards as well as these improvements, Highway 18 improvements, new policies that guide future development and planning in the area, as well as some overlay ordinance amendments suggested. So there was-
Let's just accelerate through this.
Okay. All right. So clearly, clearly, clearly we need to accommodate for growth, and the transportation system has to accommodate that. So this is all of Andy's technical work. Looking at the preferred land use alternative, we talked about some modifications based on the plan to what you currently have today. So future baseline, future what you have today versus future preferred alternative, which is what you see on the image. And then we talked about some select areas really that, that do need to have the underlying comprehensive plan land use map modified, but fairly modest changes there. And then of course, that relates to vehicle performance.
Let's just go ahead, let's get to the implementation. I would even go and come back to this if we have time, but I'd like to get to the implementation table that's the very end of this. Here we go. Heather, is this where you would like to hold conversation now and step back to other slides if we-
Yeah, I thought the V over C slide was good too, because there's always discussion about congestion at the signalized intersections, and there is a science to that. The numbers surprised all of us, the science numbers for those, so.
Go back to that.
Right.
So this slide, I think, is really illustrative of that.
Right. We mentioned briefly that the measure of standard for traffic signal operations in the Oregon Highway Plan is measuring the traffic volume both on Highway 18 and the local streets that, that travel through the junctions of Hora, Highway 18 and Norton and Cumulus are, are on the map intersections number two and three. And then on the right-hand side, we measured the volume today and what's assumed in land use in the, in the city's future comprehensive plan as a base condition. And then the comprehensive plan changes that are part of the recommended land use plan, what additional traffic is going to be generated through those two intersections. And as you see today, Oregon Highway 18 and Norton, the V over C ratio is about 0.62. The mobility target in the Oregon Highway Plan is 0.8. You add future traffic under the future base condition and the additional traffic in the land use plan for the study area, and we're below that mobility target. So that means the signal's still going to work okay in the 20-year planning horizon. And there's not as much traffic at the Cumulus intersection today, particularly the, the side street, but that picks up with land development in the future and the additional traffic generated by the comprehensive plan land changes. But it's significantly lower than the mobility target. In the, in the 20-year planning horizon, it's about 0.64 of a volume to grassy ratio, well below the 0.80 mobility target for Highway 18.
And this, just to put it in layman's terms, that the numbers, the decimal points are really sort of percentage of performance to maximum performance of that intersection. So the target is not, is once you get to an 80% performance level for your peak hour of travels, that's what we're looking at. It's not, not at the hour of travels that aren't peak, it's a peak hour of travel. Once you get to the 80% performance, you're now looking at, you know, the need to increase your, your standard there and build something else. That's the sort of jump from the signalized intersection to an interchange, which is a big jump. But with, with all this more intense land use development in this area, and with the new transportation model that we went through and put together, we still are not at the 80% performance level for a signalized intersection at those intersections. So that's, that's good news, and I think it surprised all of us after going through Because that's what determines your final project list for the highway. And what, what this plan was able to do was it was able to eliminate the need for an interchange, which could be $50 million to $80 million in the next 20 years, and keep it as a signalized intersection that it is up there today.
So we put together some logical concept phasing and costs of, of projects that could move forward through adoption of the amendments to the transportation system plan over time. And some of those projects can be done independently at any time. And so we labeled those in the first top of this chart as independent state or, state or city projects. You know, the entrance, either roundabout, or if a roundabout is not considered to be the city's best foot forward and, and the city were to decide something different, another type of traffic control, like a signal, you know, that could be installed now. New, new bike lanes and sidewalks on Cumulus Avenue, you know, near Evergreen Aviation, you know, that could be installed today to fully complement the, the street section that's there today to the entrance of the museum. There could be a project that could be completed extending Cumulus through the Trumeka community college campus to provide a full, you know, northern, east-west frontage road connection linking the Evergreen Aviation Museum and the, the communities north of Highway 18 in the study area. Then in blue, the second phase are projects that are really reliant on completion of either the roundabout or a signal at Cirrus. And those would be the frontage road improvements that would disconnect Loop Road, realign it to the Cirrus Avenue junction, an extension of that frontage road to the Evergreen Aviation Museum entrance, so that there's a full frontage road improvement on the north side of 18, and a similar extension of, of frontage road improvements on the south side of Highway 18, east and west of, of Cumulus Avenue. And then there needs to be some combined city and state projects commensurate with any new development south of Highway 18 and an extension of Cumulus Avenue south that would include some signal improvements to accommodate bicycle and pedestrian crossings of Highway 18 and connectivity along Cumulus. And those are identified in three, the orange projects. And then four, projects that are really reliant on the replacement of the existing interchange at Highway 18 and, and Three Mile Lane. That includes the interchange itself, and that could range from anywhere between 60 and 90 million. But it would include the extension of Stratus Avenue across Highway 18 and full connectivity for bicycle and pedestrian improvements along Stratus, all the way to Norton Lane and on Cumulus Avenue between Norton Lane and its existing intersection with Three Mile Lane. Those would include on-street cycle tracks, two-way cycle tracks for bicyclists and wider sidewalks in those two corridors. And then a new signal at the junction of Cumulus and Three Mile Lane. Today, there's a lot of backed up traffic waiting to turns left, traveling southbound after crossing the bridge that competes for time for traffic coming off of Highway 18 into downtown. So those projects are really, you know, generally reliant upon a completion of, of the interchange reconstruction. And then in addition to that, Lawson Lane would need to be realigned. It's a county road connection, but it would need to be realigned to Martin Road, and then those residents could access Stratus- Road, and then those residents could access Stratus Avenue at the Martin Road intersection. We put low and high cost estimates in there. Those can be refined through more conceptual design of each and any of these projects. But the grand total of all transportation improvements are anywhere between eighty and one hundred and sixteen million dollars. So it's not inexpensive. The big ticket item is the interchange itself. And and the city would be reliant on state and federal funds for that large project. Others, there would be some participation both by the city and the state, and private development will be participatory on some of these these transportation solutions.
And with that, we are at seven o'clock. We're at seven oh one right now. So I know there may be some questions, Zach. I see your your hand up. But you could reach out to Heather or any of the consultants. We do have the packet also, but we need to move over to our council meetings. So again, Darcy and Andy, thank you so very much. And we just need to move forward. Good discussion, but we have all the materials in our packet. So thanks, everyone. We need to move over to our next call-in on a different Zoom number for City Council. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Stay well. Goodbye.
Six, seven, two, two, three, six.
Where's Scott? Where's Scott?
What the fuck? Yeah, why are we here? Besides, keep Claudia.
How boring would it be without us here?
I've been super bored.
Can't imagine it would be like fucking life and sitting here.
Hey, who doesn't have a pledge of allegiance to that?
Can I see that? So it's just a TV that sees me without my hands.
They can't see you.
That's just the TV. The TV has those cameras.
These TVs have seen them have been.
It's like San Antonio.
I will never run for public office.
Agreed. Agreed.
First.
Maybe first. Oh, all you other people are here, too. All right. First in your world, Zach.
Always.
Heliocentric, and I'm the helio. It's a little space joke for you. Oh, boy.
Okay, it looks like we have all of the counselors here. Others are are joining us also. I'm going to, it is seven oh five, and I'm going to apologize for the lateness of starting this evening. We had a joint City Council City Planning Committee meeting talking about the Three Mile Lane area plan and had a presentation from that perspective. So again, we are all together now. We have a forum. So I'm going to call the May eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one City Council meeting to order this evening and ask Claudia to do a roll call. Claudia?
Counselor Geary.
Who first here?
Counselor Minky.
Second.
Counselor Garvin.
Here.
Counselor Peralta.
Here.
Counselor Chenoweth.
Here.
Council President Dropkin.
Here.
And Mayor Hill.
Here. Thank you, Claudia, for that. I will call on Chris. Could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight? I don't have a list, so I may call on some of you out of order, but if you'd allow us to do that tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands.
For which it stands.
One nation, under God.
Under God.
With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chris. This evening, before we get started, I would like to announce Agenda Item Nine B, which was is Resolution two thousand and twenty-one dash twenty-six, a resolution appointing a judge pro temp for the McMinnville Municipal Court has been pulled from tonight's agenda. So we will not be doing that this evening. This evening, we have a number of proclamations. And so we'll start with National Economic Development Week. And I see Taylor is on the line. I I saw today on LinkedIn that Scott has started his new job in in Scottsdale. And so let me read the proclamation on National Economic Development Week. Whereas McMinnville is fortunate to have four economic development organizations that partner with the city to ensure our community continues to thrive. This group is colloquially known as the Stable Table and works collaboratively to help ensure the economic growth and diversity of our community. This group is comprised of McMinnville Chamber of Commerce, McMinnville Downtown Association, McMinnville Economic Development Partnership, and Visit McMinnville. And whereas each organization provides a unique perspective representative of a constituency important for the growth and the future of our community, and whereas McMinnville Economic Vitality leaders promote economic well-being and the quality of life for this community by creating, retaining, and expanding jobs that facilitate growth, enhance wealth, and provide a stable tax base. And whereas these partners do everything they can to support our local businesses, helping them through the hurdles of startup, nurturing their growth, and celebrating their longevity. And whereas the Economic Vitality Partners stimulate and incubate entrepreneurialism in order to help establish the next generation of new businesses, which is a hallmark of the American economy. And whereas these partners provide leadership and excel in economic development for these for this community, their respective membership base, and partners through opportunities, networking, training courses, advisory services, and research, publications, marketing, public policy, and public policy advocacy, and as well as executing the vision for the strategic plan for the economic vitality of this city outlined in the MAC Town two thousand and thirty-two. And whereas these partners are focused on accelerating the growth in living wage jobs, maintaining McMinnville's positive business climate, expanding talent and attracting efforts or attraction of efforts, being a leader in the hospitality and place-based tourism, and improving infrastructure to better serve local businesses, visitors, and community members. And whereas our Economic Vitality Partners attract and retain high-quality jobs, develop develop vibrant communities, and improve the quality of life in our region. And whereas our economic vitality partners work in the city of McMinnville within the state of Oregon, I therefore now I, Scott Hill, Mayor of the State of McMinnville, do proclaim May ninth through the fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, as National Economic Development Week in the city of McMinnville, and remind individuals of the importance of this community celebration, which supports expanding career opportunities and improving the quality of life. I also invite all to visit www.i-e-d-c-o-n-line or online.org.edw to learn about Economic Development Week. In witness thereof, I have heretofore sent my hand and cause the official seal of the city of McMinnville to be effect to be affixed this the eleventh day, May two thousand and twenty-one, signed by Mayor A. Scott Hill, City of McMinnville. Thank you. And the partners, there are many of the partners are on the line. So again, thank you for all that those partners at the Stable Table are doing for us. Okay, our next one is going to be, and what what I'll also do is, Taylor, would you like just to, I think you had a few words prepared to share with us. So go ahead.
Thank you so much, Mayor Hill, and thank you for reading that proclamation. As we mentioned, it's Economic Development Week. And us at MEDP, we could not do it without our Economic Vitality Partners in the city of McMinnville, the McMinnville Area Chamber of Commerce, Visit McMinnville, McMinnville Downtown Association, and the city of McMinnville, as well as all of their various staff members and board members as well. So a huge shout out to all of our community partners. And I believe Jeff Knapp is on the call today as well, and he was going to shout out. And then I have a brief video to show you about economic development in McMinnville. It's about two minutes long, if I am able to share that with you.
Go ahead. So Jeff, you want to say a couple of words?
If I'll make it real quick. I just wanted to thank council and city leadership for their dedication and commitment to economic development, creating the MAC Town Plan, and more importantly, providing support and staff time through both Jeff Towery and Heather Richards and their work with the EVLC. So it's been, we're moving forward some plans in a very exciting way. And I think you'll see some exciting new things coming on the horizon, which I'll be back to tell you about. But thank you for being leaders with a strategic plan, something that we can use as a direction and all of us can gather around. I think the county would do wise to take your leadership as an example and do a similar thing. So we can focus on larger partnerships and more more strategic forward thinking. So thank you.
Thank you. Taylor, go ahead with your video.
Of course.
Economic development is quality of life.
Community.
It is business.
Smiles on faces.
It's community collaboration and prosperity.
And particularly in McMinnville, we all work collaboratively to try to move forward the economic vitality of this city.
So the McMinnville Area Chamber of Commerce has been here for over a hundred years. And in that time, we have supported all kinds of economic development within our community through networking, advocacy, public policy information.
McMinnville Economic Development Partnership is here to support our business community through making connections to resources and opportunities. Our focus is on trade and sector industries, such as advanced manufacturing, food and beverage processing, aerospace, technology, and the.
We oversee planning, building, and development services. I really see this sort of setting the table for economic development. We want to make sure there's the right land supply to support business needs, that we have the right infrastructure to support their growth needs as well.
Our goal is to ensure that McMinnville is the epicenter of economic industry through the retention and creation of living wage jobs.
You know, as the MDA goes, part that we also, you know, obviously do is try to create a positive economic environment for our business community. Visit McMinnville has the amazing job of voting year-round overnight visitation to McMinnville. We're also focused on enhancing the quality of life for residents. So projects that resonate with attracting people, getting them to potentially move here and start their own businesses, raise family, and contribute to what makes us this.
We have a spectacular downtown. We're in the heart of our in wine country. We've got a really diverse manufacturing and trade and sector base in the community, and a couple of really large employers that help us. Economic development binds its way into every part of our life as a community.
To me, economic development is livability, is listening to our business community's needs.
I think of prosperity, the potential to retain talent, attract talent.
Living wage job creation.
Entry-level jobs to professional career jobs.
Is protecting and enhancing what we have.
Building ourselves together.
It is a link for massive success.
Taylor, thank you, and thank our Economic Vitality Partners, the Stable Table, for sharing their comments on that message. So again, congratulations for the good work that's going on. There's much work to be done, especially as we're pulling out of the pandemic and putting together the elements that make McMinnville what they what McMinnville really is. So again, thank you. Next, we have the National Public Works Week proclamation. And National Public Works Week is May sixteenth through the twenty-second. And so let me read the proclamation. Whereas public work professionals focus on the infrastructure, facilities, and services that are so vitally important to sustainability and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of the city of McMinnville. And whereas these infrastructures, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public work professionals who are responsible for buildings, maintaining, improving, and protecting our community's transportation, water, power supply, water, and wastewater treatment systems, public buildings, parks, and open spaces, and other structures and facilities essential for our community members. And whereas in it is in the public interest of the community members and civic leaders in the city of McMinnville to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public work programs in our community. And whereas this the year two thousand and twenty-one marks the sixty-first annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now, therefore, I, Scott A. Hill, Mayor of the city of McMinnville, do hereby designate the week of May sixteenth through the twenty-second, two thousand and twenty, as National Public Weeks Work in the city of McMinnville, and call upon all community members, business leaders, and civic organizations to recognize the substantial contributions that the employees of McMinnville, Water and Light, and the employees of the city engineering, public works, and wastewater department make to protecting and enhancing our health, safety, and quality of life. In witness thereof, I hereby set my hand and cause the official seal of the city of McMinnville to be affixed this the eleventh day of May two thousand and twenty-one, signed Scott A. Hill, Mayor of McMinnville. The one thing I'm going to miss in two thousand and one, as we probably missed in two thousand and twenty-two, is having our lunch of Public Works and MAC Water and Light. I I miss that. But again, we give thanks to both organizations for all that they do. Next, we have National Police Week. And so I'm going to call on Police Chief Matt Skiles to present. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor Hill, members of the council. Real quickly, I know before Mayor Hill reads this proclamation, I wanted to say that Police Officer Memorial Day, which is the fifteenth, is Saturday, and Police Week in the United States provides a time to come together to recognize the law enforcement officers who've lost their lives in the line of duty, as well as a time to honor the law enforcement officers who protect and serve their communities each and every day. We pause to remember the heroes and the more than twenty-two We pause to remember the heroes and the more than twenty-two thousand heroes that we've lost since seventeen eighty-six. We also pause with gratitude for those continuing to serve with courage and humility each day, and we pray for their continued safety. I'm saddened by the fact that in two thousand and twenty, there were three hundred and sixty-two line-of-duty deaths, and that there have been one hundred and twenty-one officers' lives lost since the beginning of two thousand and twenty-one. I'd like to say that I'm immensely proud of the work done by all our staff, but I'm particularly proud of our officers. Each day, they show up to work, answer the calls, ready to make the ultimate sacrifice for their community and our citizens. They wear their badge with honor and pride, and I'm humbled to be their chief. In closing, I want to thank Mayor Hill, each city council member, Mr. Towery, and all of the city of McMinnville for their unwavering, unwavering support of our department. It's not lost on me that we have a uniquely positive and supportive city and that we are honored to serve under your leadership. So with that being said, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And so I will read the proclamation. Whereas the Congress and the President of the United States has designated May fifteenth as Peace Officer Memorial Day, and the week in which May fifteenth falls is National Police Week. And whereas the members of the Law Enforcement Agency of McMinnville play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and the freedoms of McMinnville. And whereas it is important that all community members know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of our law enforcement agency, and then members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding their lives and property, by protecting them against violent and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas the men and women of Law Enforcement Agency of McMinnville increasingly provide a vital public service, now therefore I Scott A. Hill, Mayor of the City of McMinnville, do hereby proclaim May ninth through the fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, to be National Police Week, and call upon all McMinnville community members and upon all patriarch and civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May ninth through fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, as Police Week, with appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all of our people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal dedication to their responsibilities have rendered a, a dedicated service to their community, and in doing so have established for themselves an invincible and enduring reputation of preserving the rights and security of all community members. I hereby, I further call upon McMinnville community members to observe May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, as Peace Officer Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their communities and have been, and have become disabled in the performance of duty, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. In witness thereof, I have hereby set my hand and cause the official seal of the city of McMinnville to be affixed this, the eleventh day of May, two thousand and twenty-one, signed Scott A. Hill, Mayor of McMinnville. Thank you, Chief, and if you could send that to our group and let them know how much we appreciate their efforts and all they do on our behalf.
I will. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Next, we have National Emergency Medical Service Week, and so I'll call on Fire Chief Rich to present. Chief?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to defer to Chief Hanifin for this presentation.
Amy? Welcome.
Mr. Mayor and council, thank you. EMS services and responses are one of the core services provided by McMinnville Fire, and we certainly appreciate the opportunity to take a moment to show gratitude and appreciation to our responders who give up countless hours of training and many more hours of responding out to those in need and taking care of whatever it is they need in that moment. We appreciate the council and Mr. Mayor being a part of that recognition. Certainly this last year with COVID and the differences that has brought to our workplace have caused our staff and our volunteers to need to step up to another level, and we are very proud of the grace and the professionalism that they have shown through that. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. I have a proclamation, and whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of the emergency medical service teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to, access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas medical, emergency medical services have grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and emergency medical transportation. And whereas the medical, emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, police officers, and others out of hospital, medical care providers. And whereas the members of the emergency medical services team, whether, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas emergency medical teams are stepped up during the time of COVID-nineteen pandemic through the changes in policy, increasing P P E wear and potential exposure. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical service providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week now. Therefore, I Scott A. Hill, Mayor of the City of McMinnville, do hereby, here do by claim the week of May sixteenth through the twenty-second, two thousand and twenty, as National Emergency Medical Services Week in the city of McMinnville, and urge all community members to observe Emergency Medical Services Week and support our first responders' resources throughout the city. In witness thereof, I have heretofore set my hand and cause the official seal of the city of McMinnville to be affixed this, the eleventh day of May, two thousand and twenty-one, signed Scott A. Hill, Mayor of McMinnville. Amy and Chief, if you'd take that back to the group and tell them how much we appreciate them being on call and the, the work that has been given to this community during the pandemic, and we've had a few fires, we've had a lot of things happening over this last year that are unique, and so thank them so very much.
Of course.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us now to comments from citizens, and so we will, interested audience members are invited to prevent, provide comments, and any comments that require any follow-up will be done by members of our staff. Anyone can speak on topics other than a matter that's in litigation, a quasi-judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for public hearing at some future date. What we'd ask you to do is let Claudia know if you'd like to speak, and we will have comments limited to three minutes per person for a total of thirty minutes. Again, you can use your raise-your-hand feature on Zoom or let Claudia know. So Claudia, do we have anyone this evening that signed up for comments?
Yes, Mayor. First, we have Brittany Reese on Zoom.
Okay.
Hi, Mayor Hill. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, Brittany. Good to have you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Hill, Mayor Hill, sorry, and city council. My name is Brittany Ruiz, and I'm in Ward Two. I'm a resident, obviously. First, I want to say it was such a joy to see my councilman, Zach Gary, along with many others helping clean up Wortman Park a couple of weeks ago. We should do more of this. The community coming together was really awesome. This evening, I want to bring up the shock and disappointment with city employees being furloughed. Specifically, per my cursory view of the budget, the city saw increases in revenue almost across the board. We also saw increases in costs passed down to the residents, but also huge expenses in capital projects in the past year. It's my understanding that the city has known about unprecedented funds coming from ARP of seven million, not including potential funds from FEMA and other projects. With projected revenues, we should be more than whole. What doesn't add up is why the city manager kept funding expensive consultants and future capital projects over the past year instead of ensuring we did not suffer any deficit and maintaining the safety of our city. My questions of the council and the mayor. First, one, who on city council approved to furlough our city employees? Should be approved by the council. If not, that should be something that's set in, in the future. Two, residents would like to know, it's not just me, this came up many times with my friends, how many employee pensions are now impacted by this decision? Did anyone have to retire to preserve their pension? Did we lose good employees? How did the city manager find a hundred thousand dollars after all this for consultants but couldn't find the funds for our employees? It's a question I'd like to get answered. Did M E D P, McMinnville Downtown Association, visit McMinnville, who were paid by the city, get money from the city? Did they get a pay cut? Per feedback from parents, they've seen unprecedented bullying and abuse of our park equipment, parks not being officially cared for with graffiti and vulgarity visible to them. Organic Valley should have had an engine on site much faster. Their engine was on a medical call instead. Response times should be a priority. I would like the city council to consider a pause on all consultants and future capital projects until we've addressed the safety, response times, and employment of our incorrectly furloughed staff, and I say that very clearly, incorrectly furloughed. I believe it's not okay that they were furloughed based on the revenues that are coming in. And I would like that to be addressed, maybe not at the city council meeting, but I would like to get those questions answered. If those were, those, those four questions, I would like to get those answered, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Brittany, and we'll have a staff member reach out to you. Claudia? Next?
Mayor, Mr. Mayor, when that staff member reaches out to her, can I be copied in, please? Thank you.
Okay.
We have no other public comment.
Okay. Thank you, Claudia. This evening, we have two presentations, and so we have a presentation from Recology, and I'll call on General Manager of Recology called Carl Peters to present. Carl's on the line. Welcome, Carl.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city council and city staff. Again, just thank you for the opportunity to speak for us tonight. As mentioned and promised last year, there's no rate increase in front of city council tonight, so I will do my best to keep my comments short. You know, last year was unusual at best in a description. You know, March of two thousand and twenty, a lot of things changed on pretty short notice, and we were able to adjust and find ways to keep our trucks on the road and our customer service reps on the phones to take care of our residents. We feel fortunate that our staff and our customers, our, our customer service reps weathered that storm. At the same time, we understand that many of our customers have not been as, been as fortunate. Some neighbors lost their jobs, others had to deal with serious illness or, or lost loved ones, just, or loss of friends. And understanding and recognizing all those difficulties, one of the decisions we made early on is to not suspend or stop service of any customers from March through December of two thousand and twenty, and we continue to work with all of those customers by offering extended payment plans and, and working out whatever kind of flexible terms we have for them. And again, we are fortunate, and we know that these are neighbors, and we will continue to do our best to do everything we can to be of service. And the year in general is actually kind of unremarkable in some ways. Our recycling tons were remarkably unchanged over the previous year. Styrofoam clocks in at about six point eight, six point nine tons a year. I think I told you, I thought if we were going to have a fantastic year, we might do eight or nine tons. It's just clocking in at seven tons. Yard waste was kind of interesting. I think everybody being home, everybody got out into their yard and went to work, and we saw those total yard waste tons jump up almost twelve percent, because everybody, they were just home and, and filling those carts. And as you might expect, we saw trash drop. I think a lot of that came from commercial business tons dropping down, and though overall the tons only dropped one and a half percent, there was a big pickup. Everybody was home ordering stuff, throwing a lot more cycling, and put a lot more trash in those, those carts. So again, it was down one and a half percent, but overall, those numbers were, were pretty tight and pretty close to the previous year. I, I think the, the thing as I look forward to that I think we're all going to be talking about is Riverbend Landfills' future and those kind of impacts, you know, if they close. We would figure out how to manage our county tons, and this could potentially even lead to some downward pressure on disposal costs for McMinnville. But expansion discussions are going to have to take place to ensure there's enough space for processing, but again, that's a, a future discussion. From our perspective, our trucks, you know, they come home every night already, so we really don't need to see additional traffic coming in, per se. But public drop-off would require work for accommodation. There'd need to be a plan for significant increase in public self-haul. But again, and I think we all know this, appeals are ongoing, so we'll see where that ends up. But speak for Recology, we will continue to do everything we can to be prepared to service the need of all of our communities. So again, as I promised, I wanted to keep my comments short. I, I would just say that we are grateful, and we recognize how privileged we are to be of service to this incredible community, and I'm happy to answer any questions and thankful for the opportunity to be in front of you here tonight.
Thank you, Carl. Any questions for Carl from the group? Council President Grabkin?
Thank you, and just looking for my notes here, but could you talk a little bit about if, your thoughts on the current bill or how you would be affected by the current bill that's working its way through the legislature? And I'm sorry, I don't have the bottle, or I don't have the bill rec.
Five eighty-two, the recycling bill?
The recycling bill, yeah. It started as a different number, and then it shifted numbers. Yeah. Could you, could you talk about, a little bit about your perspective on that as a company, and then some other thoughts about how that could reflect into the community at large?
I think as currently written, barring any changes as it goes through rulemaking and those kind of things, I think we all recognize happen, but as it's currently positioned, I think it's a great idea. It is a great idea to try to standardize recycling. I think we all get it, you know, we send out recycling information to customers all the time. We have, you know, what been, you know, should we put things in, trying to make sure that everybody knows where things go. And a lot of that is just caused by a lack of standardization on what's recyclable and how things are labeled and how it's managed and it's how it's processed. I think people know if you are in one city in Oregon and you travel to the coast, the rules are completely different. They accept different materials, or they do, or they have a drop-off, or they don't. And so one of the things that Oregon D E Q is trying to do was standardize this process and say to businesses, if you want to sell your products, they need to be recyclable. And if you're going to label that way, you need to help provide markets. So without going in too much, into too much detail, counselor, I would tell you, I think, again, as written now, Recology supports it. We would like to see standardization. We would like to see competent and effective markets for material and bring an end to that thing we call wishful recycling. And I think it will be a benefit to communities such as McMinnville, because again, it will assure that we can continue to have viable markets for materials that flow out of this community. But make, make no mistake about it, I've said this before, and I would congratulate the city council and all the folks at Zero Waste and all the other organizations doing things like the, the bag bill and, and different things, embedding plastic bags ahead of so many people, put this community ahead. And so we're seeing the benefits of being able to market material that other folks want to see. So I, I think from that perspective, again, it's going to benefit Oregon, which will get, will benefit the city of McMinnville. And I hope that answered it. It was a little bit rambling, so I apologize for that.
It, it did, it did. I think if I had a, if I had an opportunity to follow up quickly, it would just be to ask, what type of infrastructure-type improvements would your facilities need? Because that would be more of a, a direct impact onto, onto our city.
Honestly, I, I think at this point, those improvements are probably going to fall more on regional facilities where we ship material to regional facilities where we ship material to be processed. That's what I'm seeing and that's what I read right now. If we have the ability to expand programs, which is also part of this goal, it's to make recycling available to more folks. Again, we take it very for granted here in McMinville. We have the ability to have multitudes of service levels, tons of drop offs. But if you go out into these rural communities, they don't have these options. So a lot of this bill is about trying to address that and put infrastructure in place for those communities to give them drop offs, to give them curbside, to know what to put into those bins and have it be consistent wherever they go in the state. So for us, I think the only thing that we kind of look at at this point is potentially more processing capacity as more material comes into the facility. But honestly, it's nothing that I see as an immediate impactful thing that I would be having a discussion with the city about at this point.
Okay. Do you see, could it be a potential revenue driver for, I mean, it would translate ultimately, but I, I get, I, I understand that part of that question was kind of like a, well, yeah, duh. But what I meant more specifically was with things like materials that have deposits paid on them, if we saw an increase in that and increase in collections, how does that then kind of work its way into your budget week? Because you, I would think would be able to generate additional revenue if the number of containers that had deposits on them were to increase, right?
Yeah, I, you know, we, we don't see deposits, you know, tho- those things function outside of us. I think where, a, a, and a lot of this, counselor, still, I think sort of resides in rulemaking. And honestly, Dave Larmouth, who's a little more plugged into some of these, might speak more eloquently than I. But as it sits right now, the way that bill's kind of written sort of says to these folks, hey, if you're going to produce a material like plastics, you better be able to recycle it and provide infrastructure. And the way that we'll get at your plastics and your materials and, and if it's just a contaminant is by you paying a fee into this system. And then this fee will allow more access to programs, to additional programs. So I, I'm, I'm not sure to answer your question. I don't know quite how that's all going to play out. From my understanding, they have not brought the producers to the table yet to begin working out how those funds will be made available and how they'll kind of pan out. I, I think there's a general understanding that they, how they want to be used, which again is to expand programs and to ensure that if there's things that are contaminants that are still making out there from these producers, that they're paying to manage those items as well as clean up all the littering that happens as a result of generating a lot of this material that, that escapes, you know, the cycle of it. But I, I really don't have those answers yet. And I don't understand that information to be available to me yet.
Okay. Well, last question that I think, and this should be answerable and then I'll turn, turn my, my off and hand things over to Zach. Do you currently have a mechanism for sorting refundables if they're turned in as generic recycling? And thank you so much for coming in the presentation.
Thank you. And to answer your question, no. We do not convert anything to deposits because of various state regulations that don't allow us to do that. We can only do them as scrap. However, that is one of the reasons we like to have that drop off that we offer monthly to different charitable organizations that folks can come in and donate their deposit generative type of items. So we can make sure that those are available to different charities.
Thank you, council president. Let's go to Zach next. Zach?
There's a Zach level of questions, man. Boom! Carl, good to see you. Dave, good to see your screen holder. Thank you for coming. Just make it quick and brief, but slightly esoteric, two questions. What exciting things do you see coming down the pipeline for waste recovery, for the future of waste recovery? What are, what's out there that gets you excited? And then sort of dovetailing into that, what exciting projects is Recology specifically in, in our area working on to be leaders in that? And how can we support those?
Yeah. Well, I, I think we, you know, there were quite a few things that we were looking at before COVID hit. And I think we all sort of got to still see where materials and types of materials and honestly, this, this recycling bill, how this impacts everything that's kind of managing its way in and out. A few of the things that we were looking at before that, and I think we're going to pick these back up as the year goes on. You know, we're taking a hard look at the different organic material that's in the waste stream, whether it's residential or commercial and different ways to get at that and different ways to process that. And we're conversations with multiple companies on how is the most efficient, sustainable and environmentally friendly way to process that. And we're working on that and I don't want to let too much out about that, but we, we have some opportunities out there that I think will hopefully allow us to increase the city's diversion and make a lot of those goals more hopefully attainable and diverting more material. So I, I, I think organics is, is the part that, that, that gets me excited. I, I don't think it's old fashioned. I, I think, you know, Metro is looking at taking like commercial food scraps, they spin them out really fast, turn it into a liquid, send it over to an anaerobic digester. And then they try to convert that to energy. Maybe it gets converted, converted to diesel fuel and that runs a fleet. Those things are interesting. They're interesting if you have a lot of tons and a lot of material, but when we're more rural like we are here, we have to be a lot more creative. So we have some good partners and we're, again, we're looking at, I think, what's the future of commercial organics, which makes up probably twenty-five to thirty percent. When, when businesses gets back, and I believe that we're going to come out of this pandemic as a community just fine. I have so much confidence in that, that, that's that bit of waste that we really want to take a hard look at.
Well, thank you for taking my time.
That's what gets me excited. And then to looking at, at picking back up on construction and demolition recycling.
Yeah, I know that would be a fantastic area to, to explore. I know the franchise has precluded some other people being able to offer that service and has left some of the builders who hope to recycle their materials a little, little bit more efficiently. Looking for other means or, or not recycling what otherwise could be recycled. So that, you mentioned that would be great. And then on the other answers, thanks for taking time on that. I, I think it's, and maybe to put, put a point on it to say, to take advantage of our regional location. So not mass producers or in the middle of mass producers, but more in that agricultural area to, 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 to take a way to, to complete the circle of waste and put it back in, in that area. In whatever ways we, we should be the area leaders, whether it be frass or black soldier flies or whatever, would be, would be really cool and something I think we would support.
Absolutely. A hundred percent agree with you. This whole idea of regenerative farming and, and all of those things are, are just speak to us as, as a business. And I, I agree with you. I think that speaks to us as a region. And it's something that we can hopefully figure out how to be, take a leadership position on. Again, not just as a company, but as a community.
Thank you, Zach. Chris?
So yeah, I just wanted to piggyback a little bit on that, that house, that house bill that you were talking about regarding recycling. And thank you for being here, Carl, to answer these questions. I think we already have a program like that in place for the computer and electronics industry. Where the, the producers pay a fee and that money is then directed to help fund the process of recycling. So I would think if that, we already have kind of a blueprint of how this works. I, I am the recipient of paying the fee and bringing the electronics that we gather from our customers down to you for recycling. Which I wanted to, A, mention that. So we already have it and it looks like it works at least at that level. And then secondarily commend, because I know not every recycling center actually is honoring the bringing in of those recyclables. And so it's nice that we have that availability here in McMinville where I can be bringing all of my recycled products or my electronics that are dead, as well as styrofoam products down to you guys. So thank you for what you guys are doing.
Yeah, it's much appreciated. You're talking about EPR, Extended Producer Responsibility. So I think everybody knows you buy a TV, you buy a, with the council talking about, you buy a TV, you buy a mattress, you buy a lot of different things and you pay a fee. And that fee funds the management of those items. The struggle has been, I think, that these plastic producers have, have a lot of power. And they generate a lot of different kind of materials. And so trying to wrap your arms around it, and I think is, has been a challenge. But I'm, I'm, I'm pretty pleased to see Oregon DEQ and, and industries coming together and, and certainly service providers to try to figure out how we can address that. So I appreciate your comments, council. Thank you.
And I'll call for any other comments. Not seeing any. Carl, thank you for your presentation. Thank you for being cautious of, of rate increases during a time when people are struggling a bit. You have been a great partner and Dave, it's good to have you on the call. We didn't need to get into the, the, the financial details. So a, again, you can just enjoy and let Carl take all the heat today. But again, thank you too. You truly are seen as partners in our community. We, we thank you.
Well, thank you. And again, thank you for being here today. Thank you for letting us participate and to listen in on your recognition of everything that everybody does to contribute to this, to this great community. And we're, we're just, again, I mentioned at the end of my comments, we're grateful and we're privileged too. So thank you, Mayor, and thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Carl. Our second presentation this evening is a presentation by city manager Jeff Talleri introducing the presentation on phone polling as a revenue option. And so Jeff will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, in 2019, as part of the strategic plan implementation, the city council adopted a new action priority called Right Sizing Services, Addressing Insufficient Resources by Finding New Sustainable Funding Sources and Looking For Ways To Bring Additional Revenue Into The General Fund. As part of that effort, we retained Campbell DeLonge Resources Incorporated. I'll introduce John and Martha here in just a second. We asked them to do a telephone poll of registered voters about two potential revenue alternatives. One, an operating levy and two, a utility fee. We selected those because while neither are used in McMinville, both are fairly common in Oregon and in the region. And we expected there would be at least some general familiarity with those resources. John Campbell and Martha DeLonge are here tonight to present the information to you and take questions after their presentation. So I'll turn it over to John and Martha.
Welcome, John and Martha.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If we're skilled, we can get this screen up to share. Give us just a moment.
It's up.
And there we go. Do you see, do you see an opening screen there?
We do. We, we saw beautiful snow laden trees, but now we've got your screen.
Very good, very good. All right. I'm John Campbell.
And I'm Martha DeLonge.
And we're going to present the information on the Revenue Options Survey we just completed for you. We were asked to keep this presentation to just two hours, so we're going to move quickly. That was a joke. We'll be thirty minutes. And, and so we will move through. If there's a question that one feels is particularly urgent on the council, we, that it'll help your understanding through, we, we are always happy to take questions throughout, but we assume that primarily you'll be asking at the conclusion of the presentation. I'm going to be doing what we call the play-by-play because I was a little more involved in the analysis on this. And Martha will do the color commentary as we go through. We'll go through at a fairly high rate of speed. And to sort of give you an overview, we'll also say that you either have now or will shortly have all of the slides that we're presenting to you. So you'll be able to review those. In addition, the written report is essentially these slides plus a few more and a questionnaire as well.
And the printout.
And the printout will be available as well. So that said, we will get ourselves underway. We will talk very briefly about the research methods. And I'll do a time check here, research, research methods, and then we'll look at survey findings. We'll briefly tell you about the demographics of who it is that we spoke with, their reaction to the local option levy concept, the reaction to information statements. We read them as a series of information statements about the revenue challenges. And we look at their reactions to that, very standard process that we do in many different surveys. So we can give you some of that context. And then opinions regarding the utility fee option. So what about doing a utility fee instead of the local option levy? And some conclusions and recommendations that we have based on conducting these. I will say that Martha and I have conducted this kind of research for well more than twenty years at this point for, for, we've now gotten to the point where we, we say less time than we used to. But for many jurisdictions, and so we can give you some good context from that standpoint. A one slide summary of the research methods is the objective was to develop an understanding of voter attitudes and support for additional revenue options. One of the benefits of doing this type of survey is it allows leadership to see what the general voting population thinks as opposed to you often hear very good feedback from many people who come to different meetings or you meet out in the community. But it isn't necessarily a random selection of a, of, of your voters. And so this gives you that additional perspective as we look at it. We conducted a telephone survey. It was primary elections, general election voters. We conducted, yes, both landline and cell phone and had a, had a quotas to ensure that we, we talked with both. We had an approximately fifty fifty female male split. They were collected between April fifteenth and the second of May. The final sample number was a hundred and sixty interviews, which came in a little bit smaller than we were initially planning. Our data collection field had projected that they could collect more. And we've, if you know anything about polling these days, it gets increasingly challenging and there are there are always some surprises when we do this. The sample reliability for a hundred and sixty is a plus or minus seven point eight percent. That's the number that you would see in a newspaper article that says, here's what that number is. We will be reporting based on what is the individual statistical significance of the, of the findings that we're presenting. So if something is statistically significant, we'll tell you. If it isn't, it isn't. In our experience, a hundred and sixty or even a hundred is a perfectly satisfactory sample size to project large, to look at the whole general group. But when we start to look at some divisions of subsets, it gets a little bit more challenging. But we think this can give you a good, good sense of what some of the answers are. Then to look at the survey findings and who the who these folks are, a, just a one slide showing who our demographics are. The average length of residency, residency of our respondents in McMinville is twenty-four years, which is fairly typical. So generally, some people who've been there for a fairly established, though it's very relevant, we often like to underline this kind of point with the leadership that twenty-one percent or one in five of your voters say that they've been here for five years or less. And I think that's important to realize from a leadership standpoint, because those who have gotten to a point where their leaders in a community have often been in that community for quite a few years. And so you know battles that have been fought twenty or thirty years ago sometimes. You have to remember that one, one in five of your residents are really brand new. And so it's important to communicate fresh with those folks. Your average age is sixty-three. We, people are constantly surprised at how old the average age is in these surveys. Voters skew older period. And that's just how life is. So the actual voter base may skew a little bit younger than that, but overall voters are, do tend to be older than your average adult population. We had seventy-three percent are homeowners and twenty-four percent renters. So we're able to look a bit about how renters versus homeowners think. About four in ten have a college degree or higher. It gives you a sense of who the folks are that we spoke with. When we, then we asked them about the potential local option levy. And just to read you the question that we asked, we said, now I have some questions about a local option levy. The city of McMinville is considering placing on the ballot in an upcoming election. The purpose of the levy would be to provide funding support for the full range of services the city provides. The city has experienced revenue shortfalls for a number of years. As a result, it is currently making funding cuts to all departments, resulting in reduced services for city residents, including police, fire, courts, planning, library, park maintenance and recreation and aquatics programs. If the levies approved, these cuts to services would be restored. A yes vote would result in a levy tax rate of seventy-five cents per thousand tax assessed value, not market value. For property assessed at two hundred and twenty-five thousand, about average for residential property in the city, the cost would be about a hundred and sixty-nine dollars per year. If approved, this measure may cause property taxes to increase more than three percent, which is a required line in a local option levy like this. So it would necessarily appear by state rules. If the election were held today, would you vote yes for the city of McMinville's local option levy or no against the levy? Then we get that answered, yes or no, and then some are not sure and some of that. Those who are not sure, don't know, we say, if you had to make a decision today, would you say are leaning toward, toward voting for or against the city of McMinville's levy? And those who said yes, And those who said yes, we want to see how strong that support looks like it is. And so the election is currently as much as a year away, and other funding measures may be on the ballot. How strong is your support? Would you say you are very confident, very confident, somewhat confident, or not confident that you will vote for the city's levy when it appears on the ballot? We ask all of these questions because cities, we we don't do this polling a week before an election. We do the polling many months out, and so we have models that help us predict what's likely to happen between now and then. So we need to combine those questions all into one to really understand what's likely to happen. Because generally, cities wouldn't do polling after they put put something on the ballot. That would be political. This is getting you information about whether or not you want to put it on the ballot. So with the initial question, just would you say yes or no or don't know? We call that the initial ask, and it's generally more positive than the rest, but I will show that. So the initial ask is positive, but not by an amount that suggests easy passage. So when we asked that question, fifty eight percent said yes for the levy, twelve percent said they weren't sure, and thirty percent said no, they would be against the levy. So that's certainly generally generally positive. And we look at that and say, well, we need to look deeper into the numbers to understand a little bit better what's going. We generally like to see higher than sixty percent at this point so far out from an election. But we'll look at additional breakdowns to help you understand how that works. When we break the questions down into are you very or somewhat confident and which way are you leaning? What we get is of that, I said fifty eight percent who said yes, just thirty two percent total of are very confident, yes. As Martha calls that, it's a pretty soft yes to to drop that far. So it's just thirty two percent are very confident. And we have still a don't knows and leaning yes and somewhat confident. And we want to pause for a moment on this chart just to orient you to what we'll be talking about. The dark green is our very competent yes voters. The red is our no or leaning no voters, and so we call them the no voters. Everybody in between is what we call fence sitters. And obviously, if you're looking at how you want to communicate about anything you're putting before voters, it's the fence sitters who need who haven't decided yet that need help information, need information that can help clarify their decision. And so we'll be looking at those three groups as we look at the data that we're going to walk through. Martha developed a model for predictions that we can talk to you a little bit about how it holds up and how it has over the years as we've done this. What she takes is all of the very competent yes voters and one third of the fence sitters to do a basic projection with that. Now I'm getting ahead of myself because the next slide tells you something a little bit different. So I'm going to pause and tell you a little bit about who's vote, who's more or less likely to say yes. So our yes, people who are more likely to say yes of any type is statistically significant in this survey. College graduates, sixty nine percent say yes versus fifty eight percent overall versus non graduates of fifty two percent. That is a statistically significant difference we can conclude from this survey. And college graduates are more likely to say yes.
And I will say that we ask about education and we do not ask about income. A large portion of people will not know exactly what their income is. They may report it inaccurately, or they will simply refuse. We find that education is a good stand in for income. College graduates in general will make more money than non college graduates. So this is when you're looking at this is to some extent higher income people are much more likely to say yes than lower income people.
There are two other points that were not statistically significant in the study. We do see the numbers different, but it's very consistent in similar studies. So we wanted to show it to you. We we expect that it would become significant if a larger sample could be drawn. And that is women tend to be a little bit more positive than men with these kinds of questions, although the difference wasn't that much in this study. And renters on local option levy questions tend to be a little more positive than homeowners. So again, not statistically significant in this study, but it was trending in that direction. And we've seen it consistently statistically significant when we have large enough studies to to validate that statistically. And now to return to our scheduled programming and the projection that we were talking about. But assuming there is no significant change between now and Election Day, our projection suggests the passage would be unlikely, that our projection would be a forty four percent yes vote. To give you a little bit of context for this, when we've had clients where it's anywhere from forty nine percent yes and up, we've generally said, yes, we think you ought to go at the time you're thinking. We want to communicate really well. You've got some work to do, but we think you can probably pass. When clients are at that forty or, you know, in the in the area that you are in, we generally advise wait a little longer. Now, you haven't, you you aren't currently planning necessarily to go right away, say in November, that type of thing. But we generally advise, take a little bit more time to communicate, and you need a longer ramp to to make it successfully. We've only had one client who was successfully, who was gone when we said no and successfully passed it. And that was a very small jurisdiction where they could literally knock on every single door of every single voter and discuss the issues with them. So we see this as a as certainly possible. It's not as low as some projections by far that we've seen. But we see it as as a challenge with doing that. And generally, when we show this kind of projection because we know that support generally declines from that initial ask number. There are many things. We did say, assuming no significant changes. The economy could improve significantly between now and when this goes on the ballot, which may well happen, in which case it could be more positive. The economy could go down, and if that happens, we generally see a when there's been, when we've made a projection and the economy has declined between our projection and the vote, it's we it generally comes in a little bit below our projection. Otherwise, it's at or above generally. So we think of our projection as conservative, but experience suggests this would be you've got a lot of work to make this pass. Then, in addition to getting that basic information, we read them a series of statements to find out how useful the information was to them. And the question that we asked, we said, now I'm going to read you a series of factual statements regarding the proposed levy. Regardless of how you currently believe you would vote, please rate how useful the information seems to you in clarifying whether or not you would vote for the city of McMinnville levy. For each statement, please tell me whether it is very somewhat or not especially useful information regarding the levy. Note that we're not saying would this make you vote for it or against it or that type of thing. Again, as a governmental body, you can ask, is this useful information we should be sharing with you to help clarify your decision? But as a governmental body, we're not asking, is this more or less likely to cause you to vote for it? We're going to show you a couple of charts in a moment here. There are abbreviated statements on those charts. It's very important when you're making decisions about what to communicate that you're aware of the full statement that that we tested, which we will also share with you. But when we asked about these questions, the impacts on fire led followed by police and utilities and tax rates. And I will very briefly summarize what these are, but you'll see them in more detail. What you're seeing on the chart is the blue is the percentage of people who said that was very useful information to their decision making. The red bar here is the grand mean. That's the average percentage over all questions who said it was very useful. So you can see some things are below that average and some things are above that average. When you look at the chart, we had, I think, about twelve statements. There's a statement about the fire department has had to delay purchase of replacement equipment, and the levy would solve that. The police department is keeping vacancies open, which impacts response times. City utilities will continue as always regardless of the levy status and the cost, the tax rate. Those all were above the grand means. So people were more likely, they shifted towards giving it a higher rating when they saw those. Right around the grand mean is concerns about the senior center and the programs. Maintenance work for parks would be restored, library hours being restored, and the aquatic center operating fully restored programs. Then three of the last four listed here are ones that are more general statements of services or employee hours or some of that, which landed lower on the list. So there are things that internally at the city are very concerning, but they don't translate to community benefits quite as quickly to your general voter. So there are things like we gave them a list of here are the services have been reduced. We said police, fire, parks, recreation, listed a longer list, didn't resonate as much. He said, one third of all city employees had their hours reduced and stack reductions would occur if the levy didn't pass. Didn't resonate as much. I'm going to skip the next one and say, we also said that the hours at city offices open have been reduced as well, and that didn't resonate as much. In fact, that got one of the lowest numbers we've, I think, ever seen when we've asked this. So which was curious, I think, in talking with the city manager, I think Jeff Towery and we agreed that there's probably very not that many people who come directly physically into the offices. Note also that people rated the youth recreation programs lower than some of the others. We think that's a artifact of voter skewing a bit older, but we don't think that those programs are unimportant. Now, you can look at this chart and imagine, let's pretend that grand mean was zero. You could imagine a chart where people think answers above the grand mean won't go to the right and answers below go to the left, if you follow what I'm I'm trying to orient you to. I'm describing that because the next level of analysis we do is while this shows us everybody, we take the grand mean for those individual segments, the very confident yes voters, the no voters, and the fence sitters. And we look at their individual answers and how their answers go above or below their individual grand mean. So to describe that, wrestled with how to say this as simply as possible, but the tendencies for individuals or groups to rate all things higher or lower than others can skew things. No voters, as you can see, their grand mean is just thirty two percent very useful. So they get buried by the very confident yes voters who have a grand mean of seventy five percent very useful. So we separate them out and rate them against their own grand means. And by doing that, it can test, allow us to test the differences for each group. And it kind of teases out what's more and less useful to these different groups and helps refine how to communicate that information. So if it's above the grand mean, it's more important to communicate, and if it's below, it's less important. So in doing that, checking time again, we get a chart like this. And the green bars are are very confident yes voters. The blue bars are the fence sitters, and the gray or black bars are the no voters. And so you can see with the and this, these statements are ranked in the same order you just saw them. And so what you can see is not surprisingly, things at the top of the list generally go to the right of the grand means, and things at the bottom generally go to the left. But the fire department you see is important to, everybody rated that as important. They rated it above their averages. The police department is keeping vacancies open, and that impacts response time. It was curious to see that the police department appeared higher on the list, primarily driven by the no voters who found that particularly interesting or valuable to know and perhaps caused them additional concern. We're not sure, but that's that's speculation. It was interesting that the statement about city utilities that will continue regardless was less important to very competent yes voters, but particularly important to the no voters. And one imagines that maybe we're saying, well, so long as that continues, I guess I'll continue. I'll guess I'll vote no. But we're not, you know, again, that's speculation on why. The tax amount, the cost is more important to the fence sitters than the others. The senior program, more important to fence sitters and very competent yes voters. And the levy, the maintenance work hours for parks would be restored, particularly important to the to the very competent yes voters. And the library hour is a bit more to the to the fence sitters as well. And you can see some of the ones on the lower list appearing where one would expect them to do. So that's the general analysis. We're going to show you our conclusions for what that says. Martha, I've been talking very quickly. Anything you want to add here?
No, you keep going through this.
Okay. So so as we look at this, and now you're going to get the full statements. The information the fence sitters find more useful are the five on this screen. And here's the full statement we tested. McMinnville Fire Department has delayed the purchase of a replacement ambulance and updated extraction equipment necessary to assist accident victims in today's newer cars. Use of outdated equipment can impact on scene response. If the levy passes, vehicles and equipment will be replaced or upgraded on schedule. And then the levy's property tax rate would be seventy five cents per thousand of tax assessed value for the average residential property in the city. The cost would be about a hundred and sixty nine dollars per year or fourteen dollars a month. And then if the levy passes, the city would continue supporting the senior center and related senior programs as it did prior to the pandemic. If it does not pass, resources for the center and related programs would be reduced. And then the McMinnville Pub- McMinnville Public Library hours have been reduced to thirty one hours per week from fifty two hours because of the pandemic. If the levy does not pass, the city would not be able to fully restore these hours after pandemic restrictions are lifted. And finally, the city utilities point water, sewer, and electric, which are funded through utility bills, not property taxes, not been impacted by budget cuts and will continue as always regardless of the levy status. So if one were communicating only to fence sitters, we'd say, these are lead off points. These are things that they find particularly useful to help them make a decision. And we would emphasize that over some of the other points. The points that we would add in, thinking about some of our other categories, are very confident yes voters also value knowing about parks and the aquatic center. So if the levy passes, maintenance work hours for parks, works, work that keeps parks clean, green, and maintained would be restored. Now note that that statement is not just about hours of work. It's about, here's the result you get, clean, green, and maintained as well. And if the levy passes, the aquatic center would be able to operate with fully restored hours and swim programs after the pandemic restrictions are lifted. In addition, important to both the very competent yes voters and particularly the no voters, as we pointed out, is a point about the McMinnville Police Department. So it's lower on these slides, but it's very important to make. The McMinnville Police Department is keeping vacancies open in response to the revenue shortfall, which could impact response time. If the levy passes, all positions would be filled. I want you to note that what we've described so far is either about the cost or it's about it describes very specifically, here's what the community gets for this. Some of the things that don't resonate as well is when we talk to them about more generally about things that you know translate to community benefits, but the voters don't necessarily translate that. So talking about staff hours or generalized statements of service cuts are not as useful. So city services that have reduced staff hours or held positions vacant include police, fire, parks, and recreation, park maintenance, aquatic center, library, planning permitting, and municipal court. It doesn't say enough apparently to residents about what that impact is, how they'll feel it, so it was rated lower. To balance the budget, the city has reduced the hours about one third of all city employees and will need to reduce staff over the longer term if the levy does not pass. So again, that's saying hours of employees have been cut, but it doesn't tell them what they what doesn't tell you what they do for the citizenry. And reduction in staff hours mean the hour city offices are open to provide services to the public have been reduced. And as we said, we were a little distressed to see how low this was. But then we realized that likely not that many people are coming to City Hall for services directly or that many of the voters. But when we talk about number of employees or staff hours of those kinds of things, it doesn't translate enough to the voters to understand, here's how I'm going to feel that in the parks or with fire or police or some of the others. So we encourage to focus on those actual outcomes, community benefits, rather than discussion of these types of elements when you're communicating with voters. And frankly, whether it's about a levy or it's about a utility fee, as we'll discuss shortly. There's one statement that also rated low that we wouldn't consider low, but we would probably list it after some of the other benefits, remembering that our voters do skew older than the general population. But that statement was if the levy passes, the city would be able to provide a continued providing type of youth recreation programs it was providing prior to the pandemic. If it does not pass, some programs would not be restored. And so we do think that's important, but if we're listing it among community benefits, we'd say fire and police and the parks maintenance, clean and green, and some of those things before we talk about and the senior center, before we talk about the youth programs. Then we went and asked them, okay, everything we told you is true. Now that you've heard these things, if they were a yes voter, we say, how confident is are you in your yes vote? If you were a no or unsure, we'd say, now how would you vote? And when we do that, it tells us that the usefulness statements do cause many people to shift their opinions. So we had a seven point change in the very confident yes voters. So thirty two percent were very competent, yes, prior to reading the statements. That jumped to thirty nine percent afterwards. And we had no or don't know people who shifted so that an additional twelve percent moved into the yes column from that from that cohort. While that's very exciting to look at, we always caution that while this mainly look at this chart to say, yes, the statements tested have do cause people to think a little more deliberately perhaps and and cause some voters to say, yeah, that sounds like something that is, I do see the community benefit and see that it's worthwhile. Don't conclude that, oh, you just sort of put all these statements in a mailer and goes out and people read this. We spent twelve minutes on the phone with each person we talked to. We spent twelve minutes on the phone with each person we talked to. And what this means is if you could spend twelve minutes on the phone with every single person who votes, you might get this result. But do keep in mind that while this indicates, yes, it has an impact, don't assume that you'll get exactly this impact from your communication efforts, because I think you all know that communication is a challenge. So that tells us a bit about the levy and that's often what we present on these issues. But you want to know about the utility fee as well. And what we asked was the following. We said, instead of a local option levy, another means of raising revenue to prevent a reduction in city services would be a fee added to utility bills, the bill you get for water, sewer and electricity. If this approach is used, instead of a local option levy paid by all residential commercial property owners, it is anticipated that there's three-point-three percent utility fee would be required that would be paid by both residential and business utility rate payers. This would add about seven dollars to the average monthly residential utility bill or eighty-four dollars per year. In your opinion, do you consider the utility fee approach to raise revenue necessary to maintain city services to be better, worse or about the same as the local option levy approach? And the answer that we got on this is a frustrating one for researchers because the answer is maybe yes, maybe no, as you'll see. But compared to the levy option, utility pro, twenty-seven percent say it's better, thirty-three percent said it's worse. And the remainder were in the middle, either not sure or about the same. We look at that and conclude that there's an argument for either one. And so we look at other factors for which way you want to go. Obviously, an argument for a levy is you're engaging the whole community and talking with them about them and some of that. And there can be benefits to that. And the argument for the utility fee certainly can look at equity and how you're distributing who pays for what and a variety of other issues as well. But we don't see either one as a particularly worse option, which is another, which is perhaps a positive way to say the same thing. And finally, we'll go through quickly some conclusions and recommendations. And they are first, the levy is unlikely to pass without a very effective communication and strong leadership support. So generally, you want to see a city council where everyone says, yes, we've got to do this. And with leadership all on the same page with that. We see passage more likely with a concerted effort to emphasize the information rated more useful for decision makers to voters as we've just gone over. Ensuring enough time to get the message out and using that time well. So not just saying, we're going to go out maybe in May of next year rather than November, but also using that time well to communicate. And asking voters during an off-year election might improve chances of passage, though the difference indicated in this data is not statistically significant. So we do see a difference there. We run the statistical tests and say, yeah, that might firm up if with a larger sample. But all we can say is, is maybe on that with this, with this sample. Keep in mind that your particularly useful facts to emphasize are key benefits to the public. Benefits to fire departments' response readiness, support for the senior center, restoring library hours, filling police vacancies to ensure response times and keeping parks clean, green and maintained. The rate and estimated cost of the average residential property, city utilities will continue regardless. And the aquatic and youth center programs are relevant, but lower priority than the ones we've just listed. But we see that as sort of your punch list for what you want to lead with. While internally at the city, there is of course legitimate and important concern about what does this mean to staff. Remember that that is an inside the city conversation for the voters that are most likely to decide your, your, your election. So consider the difference between explaining the impact on emergency response time effectiveness, senior center, library hours and clean and green parks versus reductions in staff hours, reduced city service availability or a list of departments impacted. Really, it's saying the same thing, those two points. But asking voters to translate the second one into the first is asking them to do more than many are likely to do. So we do remind you to talk directly about, here's what that means to you in your community when you're discussing these impacts. And looking at the utility fee, we feel that the, first of all, when you're discussing the utility fee, you should be transparent and open with the public, of course. And most important, talk about the same community benefits that we just discussed because they are as relevant to the utility fee as they are to the levy. So those same benefits, that's your template as far as talking about how to help people understand why this matters and why it's important. In addition, we see that a discussion, and we did not test these details, but the financial logic for a fee versus the levy. As you saw with the numbers of what people would pay, an individual who is paying either just a utility fee or a property tax is going to pay less with a utility fee. But of course, they may have other reasons why they pay higher fees or there may be issues of who pays what and some of that. But definitely talking about the comparative cost of the fee versus a property tax levy or how fees and levies impact taxpayers differently. But outlining that as openly as possible. We do understand that this, one is a choice that you make and the other is a choice that voters make. But we see a pathway for either one. And we see success with either one if you are really clearly communicating those community benefits that we have been talking about. That is a unusually fast, restless overview of the, of the findings. And we'll happily take questions. And Claudia, I want to pause. I think we pushed our time a little bit, but we felt we have concluded there.
Okay. Thank you, John and Martha. Questions, specific questions for either of them on this study? And we take the slide down so we can see everyone.
Okay. Very good.
Mayor, before you go to questions and answers, just let me thank John and Martha and thank the council for your attention. There's no decision point for the council tonight. We're not asking you to make a decision about either or neither or both of these revenue solutions. We just wanted to provide some baseline information that we think that will be useful for the council as you have revenue discussions over the next several months. Certainly, if you do have questions for John and Martha about the information that they presented, now is a great time to talk with them. You'll also have all of the detailed information provided directly to you and it will be made part of the packet as part of the public record. And, and you can also ask questions at a later time and we can bring those answers forward to the council. So with that little preview, I'll just turn it over to the council as you desire.
Okay. So again, council, any questions for, for John or Martha? Kelly?
I don't really have a question. I thought your presentation was extremely good and bears out a lot of what we did for the transportation bond. Making it personal to the people and, and certainly got to get everybody on board to do any of this stuff. But I thought it was excellent. Thank you so much.
It surely gives the insights for some of us that have done this without having that pre-knowledge, going into it without kind of knowing how and what to do. So other questions? Okay, not seeing anything. John and Martha, thank you so very much. And we look forward to getting your slides and that report as we move forward in determining maybe a direction that we might want to go. So again, thank you for your time and your efforts and, and everything that you've done.
You're very welcome.
Okay. What we're going to do now is we're going to open a joint meeting of the McMinnville Urban Renewal Agency and the McMinnville City Council. And so I will open that joint meeting of the agency and city council. And we have full council members in, in, in attendance. And so the first thing that, that I'd like to, to, to do this evening is, is call on our financial director, Jennifer, and we're going to introduce our auditors for our audit report. And so Jennifer and Tanya is on the, on the line. So go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Jennifer for folks that I've not met on the line listening in. So we have our fiscal year twenty audit completed for both the city and then a separate audit document for the urban renewal district. And our audit firm for the last several years has been Marina and Company. And Tanya Moffett is the partner who oversees our engagement. And I think in, in the interest of time, we will look to present information kind of in the ten-ish minute range and then be available to answer any questions people have after. Because I know there, there's more to get to this evening, so. So I think, Tanya, you, you should have controls to be able to pull the document for any of the information you want to highlight for this.
I don't think, in the interest of time, I don't think unless people have specific questions about specific things, I'll just do my presentation tonight without the document.
Okay.
And Tanya, just to let everyone know that they have access to the full report that was a part of our packets this evening, so they can pull that down at any given time.
Yeah, and I can pull it up if I need to. Honorable mayor and city council, as Jennifer stated, I am here to present the June thirty, twenty twenty audited financial statements for the city of McMinnville as well as McMinnville Urban Renewal Agency. Our, we issued our report, which contained an unmodified or a clean opinion, which is the highest level of a financial statement opinion that we can give on a financial statement on March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one. It's a little bit later than normal due to the delay in getting some information to be able to do the single audit from the federal government. We were able to do our audit with no restrictions and no significant difficulties during the course of the audit. There were no disagreements with management. And we did not find any unrecorded or any misstatements when we were doing our audit for the city or for the urban renewal agency. We also completed the single audit, which is required when the city expends over seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars of federal funds. And the major program that we looked at was the coronavirus relief funds. We did not have any findings when we did the single audit, which is primarily a compliance audit to ensure that the city has spent the funding appropriately. The total federal funds that the city expended or spent during the year was one million, twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars. There was a small portion that was passed through to sub recipients. There was fifty-seven thousand that was passed through to McMinnville Water and Light and thirty thousand to Yamhau Community Action Partnership that were provided to sub recipients. We also do a test on the Oregon state regulations. And this report in the audited financial statements for the city is on page one-seventy-one and on the urban renewal is on page twenty-seven. The Oregon State Legislature has asked us to specifically look at some specific things that are not necessarily financial related. So for example, we look at Oregon public contract and purchasing. So ORS two-seventy-nine to ensure that the city, when they go out and do projects, that they're giving everybody an equal opportunity to bid on them through the process. We also look at Oregon budget law to ensure that the city has held the proper meetings and that they were properly advertised so that individuals could come in and speak on what the funds were going to be spent on for the next year's budget. We look at collateral to ensure that the safeguards are in place for the city's funds. I'm happy to report for both the city as well as the urban renewal agency, we had no findings for the Oregon state regulations. I would also like to point out that for the city of McMinnville's audited financial statements, it is a comprehensive annual financial report, which is an awards program that the city does and goes after. We anticipate that the city will receive that award for the June thirty, twenty twenty audited financial statements, just like they received for the June thirty, twenty nineteen audited financial statements. What this means is the city goes above and beyond what is required by Oregon state regulations and puts together a higher level product. Part of this includes the statistical section, which is at the back of the financial statements and it includes ten years' worth of historical data. It's a great place to look if you're looking to see how the city has changed over the last ten fiscal years. My favorite part of the audited financial statements, which is not audited by us, is the management discussion and analysis. The reason that it's my favorite is because it has a very high-level presentation of how the city is doing. It includes the twenty-nineteen information alongside the twenty-twenty information. So it's a great snapshot of how the city's doing. It also talks about why there's increases or why there's decreases, what the major variances are in the budget, as well as capital outlay and capital projects and long-term debt. So overall, the audit was great, except for the little snafu of doing it completely remotely this year. But if anybody has any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Any questions for Tanya? Go ahead, Zach.
So many clicks. Thank you. I know that this was under the heading of the MURAC meeting. And so my question was a little bit related more to the two letters we got sent by Jennifer Quayar and one, the one letter in reference to what we're going to talk about on the eleventh. But the other, the letter that I have kind of a question about is the one about the city and the audit. I'm assuming, should I reserve that for later during the budget process? Or will we get a chance to review and talk about that? Or, so are we only in MURAC stuff now?
We're in a joint meeting right now, Council Gary, so you can bring up questions on the city.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify, Tanya, in your letter that you sent in the other about the city audit that you did and then the other matters, you talked about, you know, you didn't review financial statements from McMinnville Water and Light and just wanted to see if that was sort of your overall response to the city and Jennifer catching the repeated multi-year loss in revenue that we weren't collecting from or the money we weren't collecting from them that accumulated, if that was in your, your response to that issue?
No, that is not. That is how the audit is set up. So the city has separate auditors than McMinnville Water and Light. So McMinnville Water and Light subcontract with another auditor and we don't take responsibility for their work because we did not go out and audit their information.
So if asked why we missed that, the answer would be in there, in your other items section?
I guess I don't understand the question. It was missed on their side.
Okay.
Their auditors missed it.
Okay. That's my question.
Thank you, Councilor Gary. Any other questions? I'll let it be known that we had an opportunity earlier this evening for the audit committee to meet with Tanya and have an opportunity to spend a good amount of time going over the audit in more detail. And so I just wanted to let the council know that the audit committee had that opportunity. Tanya, thank you so very much. Jennifer, anything that you'd like to end up with?
Mayor, I think he's a little bit muted, but I think Council Garvin has a question.
Oh, Adam?
Yes, thanks, Jeff. So my question is kind of a follow-up to Zach. If their auditors missed that, how do we prevent that from happening in the future? If our audit's set up to never really look at their books, do we have the ability to do that if we did it more, kind of how we do recology and do a deep dive into their stuff every three to five years? So we're not nine years out or seven years out from collecting a revenue source?
That would probably be deferred to legal counsel.
Tanya, could you just express to the rest of the council what materiality is for the city audit?
Yeah, so in an audit, we look at various things and we look at, basically, we take a percentage of what the total amount is for individual funds and we look at the materiality there and come up with a calculation that's standard best practice. And so we don't test one-hundred percent of all activities. We test a sample of the higher risk areas. And we did not feel like this was a higher risk area in the past. Now that it is, we will be keeping a little bit closer eye on it along with city staff.
Zach and Adam, did that answer your question? So-so?
Yeah, I just, I would like there to be some sort of... Yeah, I just, I would like there to be some sort of stopgap or, I don't know, it just seems like if we just go with the same process that we used, that didn't catch it before, how are we going to catch it again? I get the materiality definition and using percentages and all that in the audit process. But, I don't know, just like taking Mac Water and Light's audit at face value and never having a stopgap to do our own audit of those books we've done off the recology. I don't know if we've done it for other franchisee type uses, but I would be in favor of setting a policy that any of our franchisee revenue streams get audited by us every three years or whatever that number that we have policy. But I just feel like there should be some sort of stopgap there.
You're breaking up a little bit, Adam.
Maybe, maybe I could offer a button on that subject. I think, I think luck, we got, Jennifer did a great job in catching that. Luck isn't a plan, and I'd love to learn what we can from this and not miss things like that, despite citizens many years ago pointing out discrepancies between our numbers and their numbers and not looking into that. I think Mark Davis brought something to that effect up to us. But again, not being in this, in this field, I don't know how to specifically say, can we do this instead? Other than, wouldn't it be swell if we didn't have to get lucky again to catch nearly a million dollars of missed revenue? So whatever we can do to take away and build in safeguards would be great.
So Mayor, can I address that? So I guess the first thing I would say is you shouldn't assume that we're just relying on luck and that nothing has changed as a result of the error. We actually have changed our processes. Water and Light has changed their processes. We will have John Dietz presenting to the council in the relatively near future. We'll make sure that he spends some time talking about some of the work that they have done to try to do a better job of being able to report and record that information accurately. And we'll get some feedback from you about whether or not you think that's adequate or whether or not we need to do something in addition to what has already been done. So we're not just leaving it to luck. We're not leaving everything the same. In fact, both organizations have changed some processes as a result. And I think it's important to acknowledge that. And if, and if, and if those changes don't make the council comfortable and you want to see additional changes made, then we can have that conversation and we can look at what our options are. And having an opportunity to, sitting on the Commission Board, that was a material finding for Mac Water and Light, which means that they have to address how they're going to make sure that that doesn't happen again. And so when, when John comes before us, he will lay out in very specific detail how that happened and why that was missed. And it was, it was a hand calculation, to be honest, and now they've automated that. And when it's automated, then it doesn't get missed. But Kelly?
Yeah, you're correct, Mayor. I just wanted to speak to the fact that as Jennifer was going through and doing what she's supposed to be doing, which is testing accounts and doing kind of an analytic review when she must have caught this. So be aware that we have a very savvy and with it accountant who is doing what she's supposed to be doing. You know, it's, it's a good thing. I mean, when you consider in the last two years, we've gone through three different accountants, you know, CFOs. This was a big deal, and it was great that she caught it. And she was doing what she's supposed to be doing, which is looking at internal controls and analytic review.
Thank you, Kelly. Any other questions for Tanya? Okay, Tanya, thank you. It's always good to, to see you. And, you know, as, as I talk to the financial staff, how much they appreciate your willingness to work with them. There's a mutual respect between your group and our group. And, and I've been through this process many, many times. And given the changes in 2021 with the pandemic, how grateful we are that our systems matched to be able, for you guys to be able to do what you needed to do without disruption to a lot of our work. So again, take that back to your group. We appreciate all you do, and thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. Have a good evening.
You too.
Okay. Next, we have a resolution considering, it's Resolution 2021-27. Again, we're in the joint Urban Renewal Agency and City Council. And this is a resolution adopting the City Center Housing Strategy Final Report. And before I turn it over to Chuck, you received in your packets or in an email today, a letter from Mark Davis that was given to MURAC in a discussion that we had with the City Center Housing Strategy. And Mark will have an opportunity after the presentation by Chuck for public comment. And so I'll just, I'll let Mark, Mark know that we'll be given that opportunity. So let's see.
Mayor, I'm pinching for Chuck with our furloughs. We're protecting everybody's hours as much as we can, so.
So Heather, go ahead and present.
Yes, thank you. So the resolution in front of you tonight is for both the City Council and the Urban Renewal Agency. It's to adopt the City Center Housing Strategy Final Report. We did provide a work session to you on this final report on April 21, 2021. So I'm not going to go into detail tonight on it. However, just for the viewing audience and as well as to refresh yourselves, the main purpose of the City Center Housing Project was to create a strategy that would increase and incentivize housing within the city center area and the surrounding higher-density residential zones to the city center area, so that we have higher-density residential zones on both the north and south side of downtown, where there may be capacity for additional housing opportunities. And the capacity really exists in those northern and southern neighborhoods, as well as on the eastern side of the downtown. A project advisory committee was put together to work with the consultant planning staff to put this report together for you. The basis of the report is really that it has an action plan in it that provides guidance to the city on how to remove regulatory barriers that are providing, that are putting additional costs on housing in the downtown and also putting regulatory barriers in place that would incentivize housing in the downtown area. There's four parts to the action plan. One is code amendments that would remove the barriers to housing in the city center. Another one is other ways the city could incentivize desired housing types. A third is improvement projects that would support housing in the city center area. And the fourth one is aligning other city programs and regulations with increased housing in the city center area. The adoption of the report does not commit the city to any of these immediate code amendments. It is, it will provide direction for the appropriate city departments and agencies to begin working on the action plan and bringing those actions to you as policies for future consideration. But it does allow us to start putting that work into our work plan. MURAC, the McMinnville Urban Renewal Advisory Committee, and the Project Advisory Committee recommended adoption of this at their April 2021 meeting. And we did have a discussion about the letter that Mark Davis provided to that group as well. He had concerns that the pro forma analysis, which was one of the evaluative studies done that informed the final outcomes for the action plan, did not reflect the financial values in McMinnville. About a year ago, when the Project Advisory Committee had their last meeting, there was direction to staff to do a new analysis using McMinnville values and working with McMinnville Realtors for that. We don't have a lot of Realtors who actually do pro formas for multifamily development, especially in an urban setting. And we didn't have time and capacity within our staff to put that analysis together. So we went back to MURAC and said, we can continue to wait on this or we can move this, this project forward, recognizing that the pro forma analysis was really sort of informative for trends and outcomes that would then help inform the action plan. And if the numbers change, the trends we suspected would remain the same, which meaning that the real estate needed for the parking requirements for our housing right now is cost prohibitive for some, for housing in an urban environment like the city center to move forward. And there's a recommendation to review that for a reduction of parking requirements, that type of action planning. So the MURAC and the PAC agreed to attach Mark's letter to the cover, to the, to the appendix relative to the pro forma analysis, which was Appendix E. And so that was put into Appendix E. We didn't update it on our website, and so that's our fault for not moving that forward in terms of an update on the website with, with this letter. But the project, but the document you're adopting tonight with the appendixes does have that letter as part of the appendix to recognize that there was concern that the pro forma analysis did not reflect McMinnville numbers, financial numbers.
Okay. Any further questions of Heather from council? Seeing none. Mark, would you like to have public comment? I think Heather kind of summarized your approach, but we'll give you an opportunity if you'd like to have, have a discussion about your findings.
Okay, just a second. I'm trying to push the right buttons here. Thank you.
There you go.
Got my video and my audio both. I, I think it's been covered. You've had a chance to read my letter. I really don't need to go into detail. I'm, you know, I served on the Project Advisory Committee. I'm supportive of the action plan. You know, I urge you to, to adopt the resolution. I'm just concerned that I don't think the consultants did a really good job in, you know, reflecting thi- this community. And, you know, if, as long as you're adopting it with the understanding that that Appendix E is not very realistic as far as what goes on or has been going on in McMinnville, I'm, I'm satisfied with moving forward. So, thank you.
And I think you said that in your last paragraph, in your, in your statement. And again, it is now attached and recognized. So thank you for your input. Always good.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, then I will ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2021-27.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Counsel Mankey and seconded by Council President Grabkin. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Resolution Number 2021-27 passes unanimously, six to zero. Okay, I will adjourn, I will adjourn the Joint Urban Renewal Agency and City Council Meeting and call the regular City Council Meeting back to order. That takes us this evening to advice and information, and so reports from counselors on committee and board assignments. And so I'm going to start with Adam first. Adam?
Can you guys hear me all right?
Yes.
Yeah, we have a YCOM budget meeting this Thursday at 1:00. Now, we'll be going over budget for next year and then probably have another meeting secondarily to that typically sometime later in the month of May. And Airport Commission met last week. Wasn't really anything too exciting at that meeting. There was some lease updates, like we had at our previous Airport Commission meeting. Rob, the airport manager, is supposed to get a written report out. He had to take off early. And the FAA is doing a courtesy review of our rules, and Mike hopes to get that back here sometime soon. He said, no news is good news, but we haven't got the final nod from that yet. And other than that, there's nothing too exciting going on at the airport right now. Just worked through some self-fueling, final rule adoption stuff. And it sounded like they settled on 100 gallon per month. Anything over that, you'll have to go through a permit process and have a spill plan and, you know, be kind of set up as a fueler and not just as a private self-fueler. But that's only for people that are bringing on their own fuel onto the airport, not for the self-serve at the SBO card lock. So it, I don't see it affecting too many users out there. Most people just self-serve at the card lock and don't self-fuel and bring their own fuel on, onsite. And all that's been worked through with Mike and Debbie McDermott from a fire marshal standpoint. So I think all the users are fairly happy with it. We didn't get a bunch of feedback on that in a negative light. So I think it, everybody compromised on that approach, and that's all I got for the airport.
Thank you, Adam, for that report.
I would also like to thank Heather and staff for reviewing the luck statements for marijuana. We'll see that coming through later on. And then also congratulate her and staff on the heavy lift of getting the UGB pass. That was a nice thing to see that we didn't get tied up in appeals. So thank you for your time on that heavy lift.
Thank you, Adam, for that. Let's go to Sal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I make my general comments, I would just like to second Adam's comment, complimenting Heather and her staff on getting through the UGB process the way that they did. Much better, obviously, than the last time, so I appreciate that. Also wanted to extend another comment of appreciation for Mark Davis. I don't know if he's still on, but, you know, he, it's interesting to me that in this meeting, Mark caught nearly a million-dollar mistake that wasn't caught by our auditors. And today came forward with some other excellent recommendations related to, to the city center plan. So I really appreciate his public service and the work that he does. In terms of the meetings, we had Rental Inspection Committee meeting on April 27. I actually had a conflict, but Claudia presented the, the basic framework for what the committee is going to be discussing. The intent is to have a recommendation to come back to council by November of this year, with hopes of implementing something by January or February. With regard to council of governments, we're going through our budgeting process. We did make one out of system budget change with COG, which is to expand our accounting services. So we've gone from one and a half FTE to two and a half FTE to, to improve that both internally and then provide additional services to local governments. And our meeting for the Legislative Committee at Council of Governments is tomorrow. So I should have a pretty healthy update about what legislation is still alive that relates to city governments. In particular, we're paying attention to the changes to the land use planning goals. And we're attempting to push for some changes to make it easier to get residential sewer hookups funded. And this is in response to the challenges that folks are having up in the Saniam Canyon, getting, getting their infrastructure rebuilt. So that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Sal. Let's move to Chris. I got nothing. Okay. We, we, we love short and sweet, okay? Remy?
I'll take as few of Chris's three minutes as possible, leaving others. The McMinnville Affordable Housing Commission met. Part of our regular meeting is getting updates from service providers. So a few data points for the community. As of March 31, 2021, through the Motelling Program that's being run through YCAP, 201 people have achieved permanent housing, which is incredible. Of those, 92 were considered chronically homeless before accessing this program. considered chronically homeless, uh, before accessing this program. Um, at the end of March, there were still 52 people in the program. Um, and then also just one more point on that, of those 201 people, that's 122 households. So, um, those are families and families with children. Let's see. Um, sorry, I have a lot of notes here. Um, we also discussed more rental relief for landlords, which has been mentioned in here as well. Uh, we, and we got an update on the Stratus Village project being run by the Housing Authority. Um, and they are currently seeking additional funding, uh, even in, to enter into Phase One, but also seeking funding for Phase Two, that project, um, which we saw not that long ago in here. This was a, a total 200-unit affordable housing project being built near the hospital. Um, that, that project will be built in two phases. The first phase, um, will have a 74-unit build and the second phase will, will fill in the rest. Um, so we've, uh, the Planning Department and the city, and I have been working with them as well in seeking out some additional funding. Um, and just to reinforce how much that is still needed currently, our Housing Authority does, um, still have a, a four-year waitlist for a Section Eight voucher. Champion Team has officially closed. Um, and Howie Harkema has started Encompass Yam Hill, which is a, a nonprofit that will serve, um, in a lot of the same ways, um, where there'll be peer-to-peer support and really getting people into programming, meeting some very, um, basic needs. Um, and they are looking for the next right place to locate their drop-in center. Um, and they, they are not being met with open arms anywhere where they have tried to locate their new drop-in center. Okay, this is all, I have a couple pages on Stratus Village, but I think we got enough there. Um. The mayor went to the water board here. I had to staple a piece of paper in because I didn't have my notebook. Um, we also conducted McNeville Affordable, uh, housing interviews, um, as we are reconstituting that, um, committee after a recent change and addition of positions. Uh, and then in the Leadership Roundtable today, um, we did hear a kind of a recap of the Governor's announcement, which is, uh, that the state, um, will be looking to lift business restrictions once the population, um, has reached 70% vaccination. That's of eligible, uh, folks who are eligible to get the vaccine that are 16 years and older, and that would be that they have at least the first dose in. Uh, counties additionally can move to a lower risk category if 65% of eligible citizens are vaccinated and the county has an equity plan, um, to be able to access disadvantaged citizens. Uh, and our county does have a, um, uh, an equity plan and, and it has been being exercised in vaccine distribution. Um, and then they did, uh, go on to, uh, make the point that while business restrictions will be, uh, lessened, there's no conversation about, um, removing mask requirements. Um, as of today, 51.6% of Yamhill County is vaccinated. Um, and there are 15 vaccination clinics happening just this week in and around Yamhill County, and the county website's a good source for that. Uh, we continue to hear that our cases now are people that are, um, the majority of cases are people 30 years old and younger. Um, and I think, oh, and then this Thursday, we have our meeting of the DEI Advisory Committee. Um, it'd be a really great meeting if you can attend, uh, if the public can attend, I encourage you to do so. There'll be some things that are, um, at the beginning of the meeting that we really haven't had in public meetings before, including a land acknowledgement. Um, and then later in the meeting, we will be getting into things that may not be as interesting to the public, like figuring out how long our, um, uh, terms of service are going to be, et cetera. Uh, and that's it for me right now. Oh, and there's a, um, a fundraiser that's, um, starting June 1st in McNeville. It's similar to the meltdown, and Diane Longaker is volunteering to organize it as well. Um, and it is called Rainbow Quest, and it is a fundraiser for wine country pride, which in turn creates scholarships, um, for continuing education, vocational training, et cetera, for Yamhill County youth. Thank you.
Scott, you're muted.
Yeah. Who, who'd you, who'd you pick, Scott?
Okay, Mr. Zach Geary.
Do I have any minutes left, or did Remy take my three? Uh, I have a quick update. All in love, Remy. That was good stuff. Uh, um, really, the only one I have is MacPac. Oh, she's back. Uh-oh, my trouble. Um, only one I have is MacPac. Uh, we met last week as our first meeting of the month, um, with sort of two and a half things. Um, one was we opened the floor and provided, uh, Jeff and I provided an update, um, on just where the city's at and our thought process from where each of us sit on the sort of MOU between and the current MacPac recommendation to locate our site, explore locating our site at the Lynnfield area currently owned by Lynnfield, um, and made, made some comments and then opened it up for, uh, MacPac numbers to comment and for us to listen and just sort of provide and, and share, um, some thoughts and experiences on what's going on in the headlines, um, when it comes to Lynnfield and, and where we're going at MacPac. And so, um, we provided that opportunity. And then we saw, reviewed and provided feedback on the exterior concepts and, and real massing of what these, what the rec center and library are going to look like. And punchline is they are pretty darn cool, pretty darn phenomenal. Um, and happy to, maybe we could send out some of those screenshots or, or whatever, or if you guys want to take a look in the MacPac minutes from the last meeting, it would be pretty cool to see what it looks like. It's coming along. Um, and they're going to be pretty dynamic and pretty impressive structures. So, uh, as well as highly functional and meeting the needs for the future of our, uh, city. So that was the main gist of MacPac, and that's the main gist of my update at this time. Uh, I'd also like to say thanks staff for getting out the budget, um, when they did. It, um, let me have plenty of reading material while we went and visited the in-laws this weekend. So, thanks.
Thank you, Zach. And Kelly?
Well, having been out of state for the better part of two weeks, I don't have a lot to report. Uh, visit McNeville is next Wednesday at three o'clock, and, uh, YCAP is the following week. Um, so I'll have some more for next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Um, let me just share, uh, we had, last Wednesday, we had, um, the, uh, MIRAC meeting, and we had a discussion around, uh, funding of the Business Recovery Facade Improvement Grants, and we moved monies there. We've got a project, uh, that's happening on Alpine Avenue in conjunction with the, the Garden Cottages, the, the, the little grouping of cottages on Ninth and Alpine. Uh, the owners of that have purchased a piece of property that they, a house, and they're going to, uh, move their, um, business office there. And they're doing about $70,000 worth of improvement, making, uh, extending the roof line and, and making three kind of cottages in that arena. And, uh, we went ahead and proved and gave them $5,000 for their $70,500 project, and that's going to be moving, uh, fairly quickly. Uh, so that was a good discussion. We also had a discussion on the Third Street Improvement Project, um, what that Third Street, uh, streetscape is going to look like, talking about dollars and if there's monies that might be available. We know that Representative Noble has a, asked for some dollars possibly to, to go towards that project to get us into design, uh, stage from that perspective. And then we had our last meeting on this, uh, city center housing, uh, strategy that we approved this evening. So, uh, that was MIRAC, uh, this last, uh, this last meeting. Let me just update you on two transportation pieces. Um, the Newburgh Dundee Bypass, we received an earmark from, uh, Congresswoman Bonamiti for eight million out of the 2 million that she has to, to work with. Again, that's not a given that we'll get that, but that's what her, um, that's what her approach is going to be. Um, we still see 32 million in the Governor's Budget. A lot of process that needs to go through that. Um, and we, uh, are also, uh, had a meeting, uh, that Jeff and I attended, talking about our local funding for the bypass, the local matching, and got some good insights as we met with ODOT, and a very, very informational meeting. So I think there's, we really have a feel for what it's going to take to, uh, get shovel-ready Phase Two and possibly what Phase Three might look like, uh, from that perspective. Very quickly, uh, Mid Willamette Valley Transportation Committee, uh, we had a number of items. The first was there's a project at Fort Hill and Grand Ron, and so we had an update on that. We had a discussion around the Oregon Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee and some of the things that are happening from that perspective, and safety on Highway 99E, which it's not our side, but it's the other side, but we had a presentation. So those were the items that were brought up at, uh, MWA, this, this last meeting. Uh, with that being said, let's go to our department heads and Amanda. Yes?
I, I just wanted to jump in with a clarification question on one of your items. In the MIRAC section, you talked about that little tiny cottage village cluster, and then now they're doing something on a different one. Is that in lieu of it, or are they still doing both?
No, they're still doing both. They're struggling. They, they need to get, uh, SBA financing, if I remember correctly, and that's a longer process on the, on the cottages. They're going to be doing the other out of their existing funds, so that'll probably be the first one that goes. And just to give you an idea, the address on that is, I, oh, right here, is, uh, 384 Northeast Alpine Avenue.
Not all at once, no.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, so Amanda, let's go to you. Any reports this evening?
Thank you, Mayor Hill. Uh, I wanted to update the council that the Yamhill County Board of Commissioners meeting that was going to be discussing the mono, the 100-foot monopole in the city's urban growth boundary was rescheduled from May 6th to May 27th. Um, staff are working with the applicant to try to find some alternatives to the monopole being located there and on, um, EFU land. Um, I also wanted to let the council know that I will be at the Oregon City Attorney's Association's, um, virtually at, uh, at their conference on Friday. And their first topic right out of the gate is discussing both Boise and, um, the State, uh, House Bill, I think it's 3115, which is essentially codifying Boise and the implications for local jurisdictions. So, um, a lot of interesting topics will be discussed. That one I am primarily really interested to listen to, and, um, I'm sure staff will be coming back to council with some updates on that as well.
Thank you, Amanda, for that report. Uh, let's go to Heather.
Yeah, so, um, I might be stealing Jeff's thunder, and I apologize for that, but we learned yesterday from Representative Noble that he is advocating for five, at least $500,000 for the city of McNeville to distribute in business assistance grants. It will be done in conjunction with MEDP, and we'll set it up similarly to, that we did with the Emergency Business Assistance Grants by using the Economic Vitality Leadership Council, um, to come up with the structure for the program and the distribution of the funds. We're hoping that this time around doesn't have as many strings attached to it and, and that we'll be able to, um, help out many more businesses with that. So that's good news. Uh, MEDP still, um, it's Executive Director search, uh, that's still open. We'll be looking at candidates in a couple of weeks. So if you know of anyone, let me know, and I'll board the job description to them. Um, and then lastly, we have a new Business Oregon Regional Representative. Um, it's Arthur Shabat, Shabat. He was working with us on the Community Development Block Grant Program, so I've worked with him for the past couple of years. Very excited to see him in this new position. He's very responsive. He's very proactive. Um, he already came and visited with us, and he has agreed to bring a team of people from Business Oregon to McNeville for our June Economic Vitality Leadership Council to talk about all the programs that are available at the state to help our businesses that we may or may not be taking advantage of today. So to bring that group of state agency representatives to our small community and our, our, uh, community leaders is, is a great, um, it's great for us, and I'm excited to see that happen, and hopefully it will develop a lot of relationships for us.
Thank you, Heather. And again, a- as has been mentioned, uh, please take back to your team. Congratulations on the UGB. Lot of heavy lifting, and we appreciate that so very much. But the team needs to know from a council perspective how much we know they've, uh, what they've done under, under your direction. So congratulations.
Yeah, and I meant to say that to, for the people on, on the line who may not know, but, um, the urban growth boundary was approved by the state and was not, we learned it was not appealed at the end of April. So that's exciting. It's now done, and we're able to move forward. So.
Thank you. Uh, let's go to Jennifer. Jennifer?
Um, good evening again. So, um, moving to budget land away from audit land, um, just want to remind folks, the Oh So Fun Budget Committee meeting for the city and urban renewal districts will be next Wednesday. So hang on to your hat. Much fun awaits. Um, also, I wanted to make a commercial that, um, if folks, as you've been going through the budget document, folks from the Budget Committee, um, council members and, and members of the public, if you all can shoot me or Rhonda any questions you might have, if you can get those into me by tomorrow, we're happy to run down and answers to the best of our ability and then circulate back out to the team, kind of a synopsis of questions and answers. So we are happy to do that. Um, last year, we got a few questions. Um, so far this year, I haven't received any questions from, um, council, but you do still have, um, a day or so that would give us enough time to be able to, um, track down answers ahead of the meeting, and we're pleased to do that. Um, and the public portal for public comment is open, and so far we have gotten one. Um, and, but not as many as last year so far, but, um, we will also be forwarding all of those comments that we receive from the general public through the website, um, ahead of the meeting, too. So, um, that's all I have for you. Uh, thanks a lot.
Thank you. Claudia at the Civic Center, are either the chiefs still there?
Mr. Mayor, this is Rich. I have, Mr. Mayor, this is Rich. I have nothing to report from the Fire Department.
Thank you, Chief.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, this is Chief Gales. Nothing to report from the meeting.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, and then let's move to, uh, Jeff.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council. Heather didn't steal my thunder, but Jennifer did. So, uh, one item, in addition to report, we sent the information out to you earlier about the American Rescue Plan Act funds. Um, only can the federal government adopt something called interim final rules. Um, and so we're in the process of trying to churn our way through that 150 pages. There is a, a call webinar, um, that the League of Oregon Cities is, uh, is presenting tomorrow, or the next day. Jennifer will be attending that. Um, we are planning to get to the council and the Budget Committee, um, at least an initial list of potential, um, uses of the funds that the staff has generated that we believe are consistent with the rules, even though we're still in the process of trying to digest those rules, as well as sort of a calendar that the council can use to process the, uh, information and do some community engagement around.
to process the, uh, information and do some, uh, community engagement around, um, how we will utilize those funds over the next, you know, X number of weeks or months, however long we just spend, uh, we decide, um, to spend it out. And there'll certainly be opportunities for us to, um, consider more potential uses. We'll just use the, the staff ideas to, to kind of start the conversation and, uh, certainly, uh, be open to other, uh, potential uses of the funds as well. So we'll look forward to that relatively soon. If everything falls into place, you may actually have that, um, in hand next week. That's all I have to report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Jeff. Uh, next on our agenda is the consent agenda and we have five items. Is there any counselor that would like to have an item removed off of the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda? Seeing none, then I will ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Kelly and seconded by Sal. All in favor, uh, please, uh, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. The consent agenda passes unanimously six to zero this evening. That takes us to our resolution tonight, uh, and this is Resolution 2021 dash 25, a resolution adopting an increase in online lean search fees and repealing all previous resolutions regarding this fee at the time, uh, that it becomes effective. And so I will call on, uh, Jennifer to lead us in that, uh, discussion. Jennifer?
Yeah, hi. Um, good evening again. It's a busy agenda for me. Um, so, so one of the, one of the things that I kind of tripped over in my, um, first year here is seeing that we've, we've had these, um, online lean, lean service charges that it's a, it's a great thing to, to offer the, um, uh, folks out there. And you've been do, the city's been doing this since, um, 2003, so for almost 20 years. But in all that time, we've never once raised the, the fee, um, to provide the service. And so in the spirit of wanting to be more cognizant of, um, getting, uh, revenue recovery or project recovery when we're doing services, uh, for the public, I have a proposal, um, in front of you to raise our current fee by 20%. So from $25 a search to $30, um, a search and make that effective July 1. Um, I'd also like to, um, put on our to-do list, actually kind of digging into what are the actual staff costs, um, the indirect costs of providing the service as well as the, um, direct cost that we know is $12 a pop at this point, um, to see whether, um, this new level of $30 is kind of right for what it costs to provide the service or if we need to be, um, just more cognizant of staying on top of, um, uh, changes like you would for a normal cola or something like that for other fees. So, so that's, um, the proposal. Uh, don't know if, if folks have questions. I'm happy to, happy to answer.
Just, just one question. Go ahead, Sal. Thank you, Mayor. Um, sorry for jumping the gun there. Jennifer, how many of these, uh, do you do a year?
Um, gosh, I, I pulled the revenue. So, um, at 20, about 25,000 a year, $25 a pop. So what, that's, is that a thousand?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so it's not, it's not a whole lot, but.
So it's basically just a cost adjustment from 25 to 30?
Exactly, yes.
Okay, thanks. Other, other questions for Jennifer?
I don't have a question, Mr. Mayor, but I am going to, out of abundance of caution, recuse myself from this discussion and from the vote.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, then, um, I will ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2021 dash 25.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Zach and seconded by Sal. All, and, and we note that Chris has recused himself from the vote. So we will have five votes this evening. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Indicate by saying nay. Resolution 2021 dash 25, uh, passes on a vote of, of, uh, five to zero with one abstention. Well, uh, thank you. It's been a long evening, lots of information, uh, and so I will adjourn the city council meeting at 9:29 this evening. Thank you all.